Hello. A call to order, the City of Boynton Beach City Commission Meeting today, Tuesday, July 21st at 5:31 PM. Alan, would you please provide an introduction?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Hello and welcome. My name is Alan, and I will be providing assistance to the mayor and elected officials during today's meeting. Before we start, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items, so the public audience knows how to participate. Your microphones have been muted to reduce background noise during this public meeting. There will be specific times during this meeting when members of the public can ask questions and provide feedback. The first way is by typing their questions into the question section at the bottom of the GoToWebinar interface. Those items will be read into the record by a meeting organizer at the appropriate time. Please be sure to include your name for the record. The second way is by using the GoToWebinar interface and clicking on the Raise Hand option. Meeting organizer will announce the speaker and unmute their audio, at which time the speaker should state their name for the record. Before speaking, please take steps to minimize any source of background noise and speak clearly into your device during your allotted time. I will now turn control over to Mayor Stephen Grant, who will be presiding over today's meeting.
Thank you, Alan. First, we have invocation by Reverend Lori Dukie of Durgan of United Unity Church of Delray. And then following that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Ty Penzerga. Reverend Durgan, are you available?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, let us pray. Loving Creator, with grateful hearts, we thank you for all the blessings of life, for family, health, friendship, work, food, hope, love, beauty, and peace. With grateful hearts, we thank you for the countless helpful people in our city, those who have nursed and doctorred, policed and protected, all those who have served our city and each one of us, so that our daily lives have been sustained and blessed. Let us remember that peace on earth begins in our own hearts, in our own homes, in our own places of work, and in meetings and rooms just like this one tonight. And lastly, let us give thanks on this very special day for all those pioneers who worked tirelessly and sacrificed more than we will ever know to build this precious city we all call home. God help us to always remember that we are your trusted servants, and to be always mindful of the needs of others and how we can best serve for this and so much more. We say thank you, God. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Present.
Vice Mayor Ty Penzerga.
Here.
Commissioner Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Woodrow, hey.
Here.
Commissioner Christina Romulus.
Present.
Mayor, we have a call.
Wonderful. Additions, deletions, and corrections to the agenda. Received a request to add Craig Clark for announcements.
Mayor, I'd like to also make two announcements regarding the mobile COVID testing clinic, as well as the food distribution that's happening this Saturday.
All right, so add those as D, E, and F. All right. And the other thing that I'll ask the City Commission if we want to do, have a brief conversation now or wait till August, but I would like to have an opportunity to speak to with my fellow commissioners is in regards to Palm Beach County School District's decision to have virtual school. The main concern is, is that we don't necessarily have an obligation to do anything for our residents, but if we have the ability to make their lives easier, I think we should research that and review it, because I understand, as our Commissioner Katz will definitely attest to, is that he's not only a teacher, but he is sometimes a babysitter, or a child sitter, or a teeny. And with that, we are losing that aspect if we want our working parents to be able to go to work. And that's something that it scares me for the economy of our city. So I'll ask you, is it something you would want to have a brief discussion, so we can direct staff to come back with more information at the next meeting? Or do we want to brainstorm and direct staff to bring us more information at a future time?
Mayor, I'd be open to having an exploratory discussion and for staff to come back once we have some sort of consensus.
I wouldn't oppose a discussion by the Commission, but I wouldn't request that staff do any work until we gave input on exactly what we wanted from them. I can say my personal opinion is that...
I'd like to wait for the new, you know, if we've added to new business.
Gotcha.
At that time.
I think if we add it to new business, I'd support that, so I could express my position that I don't know if municipalities could be involved in this safely.
Thank you. Thank you. So we'll put that discussion on childcare for the fall 2020.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to, I don't know if it's on here or not, but I would like to have a moment for the two great leaders that we have that died recently, C.T. Vivian and Congressman John Lewis, like to say a few words about them.
Okay, you want to include in your informational items?
Yes.
Okay, so I have some words as well about them. And so if there is any other additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda, may I have it approved as amended?
So move.
Second.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. All right. Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin informational items?
Nothing to, well, actually, I did. I spoke to Andre Park from Saks Ash Kaplan regarding a discussion of a community development district in District One, and some issues revolving around that that might come up in the future. Otherwise, nothing to disclose that I can remember, other than to thank staff for the awesome event today at the new City Hall. I think it was, it was a great experience, and sadly, it was a muted experience, obviously, given the conditions outside with COVID, but I think it was awesome nonetheless, under the circumstances, and I'm happy for everyone's work that went into it. That's all.
All right. Commissioner Hay, do you have, you're in for a chance for informational items?
Yes, I believe, because these two great leaders of this country that we lost, if you would allow me, just, all of us just to have just a moment of silence, and then I'll say a few words.
Absolutely.
Amen.
Amen.
I would like to just say just a few words. The two great men that I'm talking about is C.T. Vivian and also Congressman John Lewis. You know, the President has had the flag flown at half-staff. But C.T. Vivian was an American minister. He was an author, and he was a close friend and lieutenant of Martin Luther King Jr. during the Civil Rights Movement. I remember him. C.T. Vivian resided in Atlanta, Georgia, and he founded the C.T. Vivian Leadership Institution, Inc. He was a member of the Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity. And then we have our great leader, Congressman John Lewis. He was known as the conscious of the Congress, a very peaceful, yet courageous man. And he was on the front lines of the bloody campaign to end Jim Crow laws with blows through his body and a fractured skull to prove it. Congressman Lewis was a fearless, he was fearless in the Civil Rights Movement, and the last surviving speaker from the March on Washington for Jobs and Freedom in 1963. Right now, there's a petition that's out to rename the Edmund Pettus Bridge after Representative Congressman John Lewis. They're right now at one-half million, they're trying to get to one million votes. John Lewis signatures. John Lewis was an icon, and he nearly gave his life on that bridge. Now, the bridge is Edmund Pettus, Pettus, and he was a, just say what it was. He was a bitter racist, he's undeserving of the honor bestowed upon him. The Edmund Pettus Bridge is now a national historic landmark and was the site of the brutal Bloody Sunday beating of civil rights marches during the First March for Voting Rights. Lastly, was seen all over the nation and all over the world. This prompted the public support for the civil rights activities in Selma, Alabama, and for the Voting Rights Campaign. After Bloody Sunday, protesters were granted the right to continue marching, and two more marches for voting rights followed that episode. A great spaceman, a great leader, we have, we are going to miss. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Our next Commissioner would be Commissioner Romulus. Do you have any informational items to disclose?
None to disclose at the moment. I just want to thank Commissioner Hay for just educating us on the history of these two great leaders who have gone on before us, and, you know, again, for young people like myself and others who follow in their footsteps. You know, we couldn't have been where we are now if it wasn't for individuals like that. So I also echo his sentiments and want to really just make sure that we, as a community, continue to honor these great legends that have gone on. In addition to that, I just want to thank staff for a tremendous celebration this morning. Again, as Commissioner Katz mentioned, it was muted, and it felt a little somber, really, because of just the weather and everything going on. But at the end of the day, it was just a time to celebrate and to really hold our heads high for the hard work that so many have done before us, and those of us who are still currently on the Commission, and those who have, you know, who are no longer on the Commission, who put work together, who put their heads together and worked really hard to get us to the point where we are now. So, you know, congratulations to just everybody who played a part. Everybody deserves recommendations for the work that we did to get that, those buildings out of the ground, out of conceptual diagrams, and out of blueprints and papers and all that, and actually into hard stone cold concrete, and here in the heart of our city, to beautify it and to show others, you know, where we are and where we're going. So with that, that is all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Vice Mayor Penzerga.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo many of the things that have already been said, but also, I want to give a special thanks to everybody involved in putting today together, the marketing team, Eleanor Chelsea, Laura, and everybody else. And we all saw how well of an organized event that was. But also, and acknowledge the little things, because sometimes it's the little things that make you stand out and become more memorable, whether it's the cupcakes with the city logos, or the surprise little fireworks. And I just want to thank you all for doing that. You have made it a very memorable 100-year celebration of our city, and I'm looking forward to the next 100.
All right. Thank you.
I agree, the cupcakes were a great touch.
I think I have. There you go.
I got something back there somewhere, too.
All right. For myself, on Monday, July 13th, I attended the City of Boynton Beach Tourism Board. We were working with, or discovered the Palm Beaches and creating a tourism master plan on behalf of the city. On July 14th, I attended the Regional Issue Summit in the morning. On the 15th, I attended a Zoom meeting, listening to other mayors from the State of Israel and how they're dealing with COVID-19. On the 16th, I attended the Transportation Planning Agency's meeting. I was on radio with WBPR, and I attended a ribbon cutting through the Delray Beach Chamber of Commerce for Dr. Delia Weiss, who opened up a location on South Seacrest in Boynton Beach. And on July, what is this, 17th, I had a conversation with Carla Roderick, who is the government liaison for Comcast. In addition, on the, I think, the 21st, or also on the 18th, I heard from Ian Cotner from AT&amp;T, their government liaison. One of the things that we'll, I'll be discussing with the Commission is regarding internet access within the City of Boynton Beach, and how important is that we, you know, we've helped, or do what we can to make sure that all the students have internet and computers. The next thing is on July 18th, I was able to attend, I believe, the third Connect to Greatness graduation. These young men attended weekly mentor-mentee classes, and it's just amazing to see where they, you know, started and where they're going. And that's kind of where I've had the conversation. How does, if the city has the availability to help those in need, I do feel that we should be doing that. And then on the 21st today, we had our ribbon cutting for City Hall. You know, it is very, fills me with a lot of joy to take a look at it, because it is a beautiful building. And, you know, we're fortunate enough to see behind the scenes, and the the offices that we provide our staff, I think, is that it's going to really help with employee retention and attracting new employees, so that we have the best and brightest, because we already do in the City of Boynton Beach. And it's just very exciting, can't not wait for the chambers to be finished and that we can all be together when that occurs, and for our City Hall Cafe to serve, to be able to serve us. So looking forward to all of that that is coming up. And I think that is it for, oh, and for my informational items. I received an email from our city attorney, and I'd like to read the quotes. The first one is by John Lewis. "Freedom is not a state, it is an act. It is not some enchanted garden perched high on a distant plateau where we can finally sit down and rest. Freedom is the continuous action we all must take, and each generation must do its part to create an even more fair, more just society." And then the quote from C.T. Vivian, "Nonviolence is the only honorable way of dealing with social change, because if we are wrong, nobody gets hurt but us. And if we are right, more people will participate in determining their own destinies than ever before." And, you know, my personal favorite John Lewis quote is, "If not us, then who? If not now, then when?" And that's kind of where I have that philosophy. It's, let's figure out what we can do now, because we don't necessarily know what will happen in the future. And that is it for my informational items. And if there's nothing further, we will move on to announcements and proclaim July 21st, 2020, as the City of Boynton Beach Centennial Day. And I will accept the proclamation. City of Boynton Beach Proclamation. Whereas individuals and families interested in its rich ground for farming settled in Boynton Beach in the late 1800s, and whereas in 1894, Major Nathan S. Boynton I visited the area that now bears his name, purchased land and built a hotel. And whereas the addition of a railroad in 1896 permitted the shipping of tomatoes and pineapples to the north, and dairies were established. And whereas 50 qualified voters residing in the territory assembled on the 14th day of April 1920 and elected R. H. Rizzo as Chair and J. M. Cooper as Secretary of the Meeting. At this meeting, 48 attendees voted for incorporation, a town seat was adopted, and J. G. E. Coon was elected to the office of mayor. And whereas the town of Boynton, now the City of Boynton Beach, incorporated on the 21st day of July 1920, 100 years ago. And whereas as significantly important it is for the City of Boynton Beach to honor and celebrate its beginning, it is equally important to look to our future and create future legacies. And now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach in Palm Beach County, proclaim July 21st, 2020, as City of Boynton Beach Centennial Day. And now we would all raise and clap. Yeah, I'll stand. And I hope everyone can see behind the balloons that our marketing department had for the 100 years. And I believe we actually have Abby Guido, who is going to sing "Happy Birthday" for us. And so I just want to make sure that she is unmuted.
Hello.
Hello.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to the City of Boynton Beach.
Thank you so much, Abby.
Thank you.
All right. And Eleanor, do you have anything to say on behalf of a marketing department?
Okay. I know she's probably trying to...
Eleanor's, I'm sorry, Eleanor's microphone should be on there, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everybody's support in changing the events that occurred this year into smaller events and celebrating our centennial, a year-long process, rather than on one day. We are creating a video that we should be uploading tomorrow to our Facebook page that goes over the history of Boynton Beach that we've been working on. And other than that, I just appreciate all your support and wish every resident and business and visitor making memories in Boynton Beach that we can document in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And Eleanor, I have a question. You know, there was some funding that we didn't use because of the different events. Are we going to be celebrating 101 years next year?
You know, there's been many, many comments about that on Facebook and such, and something for the Commission to talk about.
Okay.
Sometimes I'm here, Mayor, I've got to retire, too, you know, so we'll have a discussion.
Oh, I thought you were here for another 100 years.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your support.
Next, we have, recognize and celebrate the city's commitment to work towards full compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Debbie Majors, ADA Coordinator, Ted Goodenough, ADA Assistant, Stephanie Soplop, Recreation Assessment Specialist, and Beth Wegmeister, Business Inclusion Outreach Specialist, will accept the proclamation.
Hi, Mayor, this is Debbie Majors, Grants and ADA Coordinator. Are you able, okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So on behalf of the City Manager's Office of Accessibility and our community, I want to thank you so much for this proclamation. In 2015, we celebrated the 25th anniversary, and the city did recommit their efforts to fully comply with the ADA. So we began this by creating an inclusion support team with just three organizations. And to date, just five short years later, we have over 18 organizations assisting us with our accessibility and our inclusion efforts in the community. And I just want to take just a minute to highlight some of the accomplishments that have been made in the city, because truly, it's touched all aspects of the city. We had barrier-free park come onboard back in 2015, right around 1516, and we provided opportunities for children and adults of all abilities to play side by side. We've also created an accessible kayak launch at Harvey Auer Park, Harvey Auer Junior Park. We have an accessible beach mat at Oceanfront Park. The Lynx Golf Course has an accessible golf cart. We have a wheelchair lift at the John Denson Pool. And our recreation department is the only recreation department that I know of, even in the nation, that has something called an IRP, or an Individual Recreational Plan. And that's similar to the school district's IEP for Individual Educational Plan. And what that does is provides us the ability to modify policies so children with disabilities can participate in our programs. And Stephanie Soplop, the Recreation and Assessment Specialist, created that program, and it's been working very successfully for several years. We did also involve our representatives from our community in our planning for accessibility in Town Square. And we have portable hearing loops, as well as permanent hearing loops for individuals with hearing aids and cochlear implants at our City Hall, our Police Department, and our Cultural Center. And these are very rare to find, and they are very appreciated by individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. Also, what's, let's see, what else? In 2020, we just launched our Inclusion Works Business Support Program. And what we're doing is providing resources and support to our local businesses, so they can be more inclusive and be sure that they're complying with the ADA. And just one or two more things. We did provide internships to students from South Tech Academy, so they could come and see what it would be like to work at the city. And these are individuals that are on a special diploma program. We have also provided support and employment through the Florida Division of Blind Services, which I'm very happy to say resulted in me getting an ADA assistant position, Mr. Ted Goodenough, which has been wonderful. And finally, tomorrow, with the assistance from our marketing and communications staff, we are launching a new Facebook page, and that's going to be called Inclusive Boynton Beach. And there, we will connect and further educate and inform our community of all the wonderful things we're doing and how we've connected with our community of individuals with disability and how they're becoming part of our city in all that we do. So I want to thank you very much for this proclamation, and we'll continue to work hard.
Thank you, Debbie. And you kind of got in front of me. I haven't read the proclamation yet, so...
Okay.
City of Boynton Beach Proclamation, recognizing commemorating the 30th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, whereas July 26, 2020 marks the 30th anniversary of the enactment of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, ADA. And whereas prior to the enactment of the ADA, people with disabilities were often segregated and denied equality of opportunity based on fear, ignorance, prejudice, stereotypes, and labels. And whereas the goals of the ADA include equality of opportunity, full participation, economic self-sufficiency, and independent living. And whereas state and local governments and businesses recognize the public interest in extending civil rights protection to all people, including people with disabilities. And whereas 30 years after the enactment of the ADA, the law remains a crucial tool in addressing persistent discrimination, including failure to ensure competitive, integrated employment, provide meaningful opportunities to community-based services and supports, and eliminate new barriers to equal opportunity, such as inaccessible websites, online systems, mobile apps, and other forms of information and communication technology, algorithm bias in artificial intelligence, lack of access to the gig economy and the responses to pandemics and other national emergencies, and ineffective or inadequate responses to pandemics and other state or national level emergencies. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, to hereby reaffirm that the City of Boynton Beach will continue to work toward full ADA compliance and encourage and support our community partners and businesses to do the same. And so on July 26th... And so on July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, we will celebrate Americans with Disability Act. All right. And Debbie, I just want to bring back the story that we went to the Palm Beach Habilitation Center together and how it really opened my eyes, and I think yours as well, so that we created in the city of Boynton Beach the Business Inclusion Program. Because, you know, self-sufficiency is something that we all desire for ourselves and our families and our friends and loved ones. And I'm glad that the city of Boynton Beach is recognizing that everybody who wants to work given that opportunity to work.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay. And if there's no more further comments or questions, we will move on to our third announcement, which is a presented update on the Town Square Project.
So Mayor and Commissioners, Colin Groff, Assistant City Manager, I'm glad to bring you this update of our Town Square Project. I'm going to start off with what we did today. You know, we did our ribbon cutting of our new building on our hundredth anniversary of the city being founded. So the city was founded in an older building, and now we're in a new building on the hundred-year anniversary, and this is a hundred-year building. So if anybody's going to be around at two hundred years, they'll still be looking at this building. So I don't think many of us will be, but who knows? But I did want to say, so the building is operational. As you know, staff is in, staff is working. It's open to the public to conduct business in the building. It is limited services because of our emergency orders and limited amount of people that are coming into the building. The mayor did bring up the cafe. You know, the building is still under, the punch list items are still being completed in the item. And two of the items in the building that we are in the process of going through a vendor selection is for the cafe that's in the building and for the incubator space in the building. So both of those will be bringing you information on as we develop it to find vendors for those spaces. We really needed to wait until the building was open before we did that because most of the people we talked to said they don't wanted to see the building finished. They just, they looked at the plans and they really wanted to see the finished product, and the people walking through it now are just amazed. It's going to be a great place for business because there is a lot of walk-through traffic. Next slide, Alan. We will get there. We got, I'm just going to go through real quick all of the projects in Town Square, and then I'll open up for questions, and then we're going to have Mark Heffernan with E2L follow up me and then John Markey, the private developer with JKM Development. So our district energy facilities, the plant is complete and operational. And right now, all of the buildings in the Town Square are using chilled water to cool them. And as you all found out in the budget meeting, this is going to save us quite a bit of money on our electric bill. So in the long run, this is a great new utility for the city. And as we add customers to it, it'll become profitable to the city. Fire Station One, as you all are aware, it is occupied. It's operational. They're serving their area. It's fully occupied. There's a couple of minor punch list items that need to be completed that they're still working on, and they'll be completed within two weeks. But the firefighters are in the building and using it. The police station, the police station is also occupied and operational, although it's not open for the public yet. It's operating under a temporary certificate of occupancy. There's, they are, there's some, there's a substantial completion punch list for that building, and the contractor's working through them. They started off with, I don't know, a hundred pages, and they're down to about five or six. So they're getting them knocked off as we go through the building. It's a fairly large building. City Hall is in the same boat. It's a fairly large building, so there's a lot of issues. Once you move in, you find things that need to be fixed, and the contractor's doing a good job getting them fixed. We should have that final completion. We're hoping sooner than forty-five days, but within forty-five days. And then, you know, we will have it open for the public to do business there at the police station. The cultural center, again, that's the old high school. It's substantially complete, and it has been. Staff is going to be occupying the building under a temporary certificate of occupancy for a little while longer, where there's a couple minor issues to be solved. This is a historic building, so when you're building in a historic building, it's, you run across things that you have to actually solve once you get to them, and that's what we're in the middle of right now. But the building's gorgeous, and we really can't open it to the public anyways because the type of classes and all of that that'll be in the building, we really need to wait a little bit before we can do those. So I'm sure we're going to have a great ribbon cutting for that building when it's ready. Next slide, Alan. All right, the infrastructure, all of the infrastructure, all the underground, as you saw in the first picture, all the underground utilities, the stormwater, the hardscape, the sidewalks, the lighting, everything that the city was going to do is complete. We have paved all the roads except Southeast First, Southeast Second Avenue, and Southeast First Street. Those have the first lift of asphalt, meaning the first layer of asphalt's down, but the second layer is not. That's why when you drive down those roads, it might be a little bit bumpy. And the reason is, is there's going to be private construction going on, and they have a tendency to tear up roads a little bit. So we were going to wait for the second lift until that construction, the heavy part of that construction gets, is finished. And we'll hopefully get an update on that later on, on this update. The Town Square Parks, we don't have names for yet. We will be doing that through our naming campaign and through some other things, but I'm giving you the generic names right now. So hopefully nobody inherits these and just starts calling them this. Because that's what we seem to do with parks. Somebody uses a name, and then all of a sudden, it's the name of the park. These are not the names of the parks. These are just the areas. So the Central Green, which is the one where the amphitheater is, is, everything's in, the final grading's underway, final sod and landscaping will happen after the amphitheater. And the kids' adventure park, which is the stuff on the north side of Ocean. Again, all the hardscapes complete, equipment's received, and as you saw today, a lot of the equipment's being installed. It's about forty-five days out before all of the equipment's installed and the surface is down, and it's ready to be open for play. We are looking forward to that because we see kids coming by every day, and they're just drooling to try to get on the equipment. We had actually, a mother lost, lost a couple of kids today who got out and got through the fence and got onto one of the pieces of equipment. So we had to get over there and kind of gently help them off and help them out of the fence, but they sure had fun for the five minutes they were on it. So, but it was pretty neat. The public art, we have a lot of public art coming back into the square, and that's all being delivered now and being installed. Some of this is the stuff that was already there that was removed and being put back. And again, the one public art piece that's new to the project is up. The second one is going to be installed in the next thirty to forty days. Amphitheater, if you could see it today, the structure's complete, waiting on final stucco and painting. Electrical and AV is still under construction, and again, it should be complete in forty-five days or less. It'll be complete. It might be actually less than that. Next slide, Alan. So the overall, we, the city's provided all the utilities and infrastructure for the private parcels. We've completed all that in December twenty nineteen. JKM, you'll see in a picture later, they have provided, because the garages aren't finished, they provided the temporary parking. It was finished on time for the opening of City Hall. There's a couple little things that they're finishing up. We're in contact with them on a daily basis, and they are finishing those up. Couple of the items got delayed due to some rain and some other issues.
But if I go like that, all you see is, all I want to see.
That's Debbie. So Debbie's got to mute her phone. I could hear her. I think their microphone started working. It wasn't working at the beginning of the meeting. I think it started working and they forgot to mute it. Anyways. So we do have some temporary parking easements that we've agreed to sign with JKM. They are approved by the city, and I think that JKM's waiting on somebody on their side to review it and approve it, and they'll be signed. We do, the south garage building permit was approved in September of last year. It's sitting there waiting to go as soon as the garage is ready to go. The south building, the south apartment building, the application was filed last year in October. There was some comments sent in January. They, the developer resubmitted, JKM resubmitted in June, and that review is underway, and we're working directly with their architects and subcomments and things to make sure we get that out as soon as possible to them. And we have some contractual completion dates of June fifth, twenty twenty-one for the south garage and December fifth, twenty twenty-one for the north garage. So that's the latest date. So we're going to be, hopefully we'll hear a little update on that later on. But that's one of the issues we're working on is we do need these garages to make this downtown fully functional. So parcel one, that's really the covering all of the parcels two, three, and seven, which is owned by JKM developers and their subsidiaries. Parcel one is still city-owned. That's the corner of Boynton Beach Boulevard and Seacrest. The plan is E2L Real Estate Solutions is ready to close, purchase that property and close on it. There's a couple outstanding issues that they need solved. One is, is they need some parking guarantees to make sure that there's parking for that site that's going to be available. So when that occurs, they're ready to close on that and start construction. So their holdup is really, again, on the garages right now, but hopefully we can work through those. Next slide. So I'm just going to show you a couple pictures of the parcels we just talked about. This is the south parcel ready to go. It's fenced. You see some, this is from four or five days ago. There are still some construction vehicles being parked on it through an easement that's there. Those are almost gone. We don't really need that parking anymore because the contractors are almost finished. Next slide. So this is the temporary parking. As you saw, it was constructed. And parcel two, the north garage is where the north garage goes and the north apartments. And of course, we know the apartments and north garage is a later project than the south garage and the south apartments. But that site is ready. And then parcel one is the far site. Again, it's ready to go to. There was some excess dirt left over from the parking lot development. And so Haskell worked with JKM, and Haskell had a person that wanted that dirt, needed it. So we were able to get the dirt off the site that was generated on site. Actually, no cost to the developer. So I think that worked out. That's a great example of teamwork that we have on the project. Next slide. So with that, I'm going to end with, see if anybody has any questions on the city portion or anything else that I can answer. And then I'm going to turn it over to Mark Heffernan, who's going to, you see, he has a short update on what he's planning on parcel one, and then we'll turn it over to John Markey on his parcels. So I wanted to end with just an overall picture of the site and the parcel numbers, because I always talk about parcel numbers, and sometimes people don't know where they are.
Thank you, Colin. I'm going to just run through the city commission and see if they have any questions. Commissioner Ramos, would you like to begin?
Yes, my only question is more so, maybe this is a Lori question, but just where are we with the naming rights campaign? How's that coming along? Are we getting good feedback? How's that going?
It stalled, quite frankly. We kind of stopped it during COVID because it really wasn't a time and stopped paying the consultant. And she, we peeled back on that while it was not a time to be making any asks. I just spoke with Charlotte last week, and her and Suzanne are, they're ramping back up now. We've had some communications with Harvey Oyer. He's working on some potential leads for us for the adventure park. And she has some leads, so now she's reaching back out and going to start again.
Did we have any, did we do any, make any progress before we stopped? Was there anything?
I think, well, we had the donation from the Friends of the Library, which was a substantial donation. And I think that's really it on the larger gifts at this point. I know, and I don't have details, but I know Mark Heffernan has been working with, has reached out already to all of the contractors and subcontractors on the job to participate. And I really, I anticipate they will. So now we're just kind of comfortable having the conversation again as, even though COVID hasn't gone away and people are still having a hard time, we're modifying the approach, softening it, but ramping back up. Well, hopefully I'll have something, you know, I'll try to report to you in another month or so. I think we need at least that much time to see what the feel is if people are going to be responsive.
Okay, thank you for the update.
All right. Vice Mayor, do you have any questions or comments?
Not right now. I think I'll wait for the developers to come on.
All right. Commissioner Hay or Commissioner Katz?
Well, I guess a little question for Lori. You were talking about all the art that is going in place, and there's still some more to go in. Can you give us kind of a status on where we stand? Is it looking pretty good for a new director? Or how's that going?
Oh, we have received probably, and I think, did I, I hope I sent it out to you. I think perhaps, yeah, past couple days, I sent an email out just giving you a little update. We have received well over a hundred applications for the job. I believe interviews are going to be happening next week for the public art manager. The art install, as far as Town Square goes, we have probably over the next, Colin, would you say sixty days? We should be getting most of it in inside Town Hall. We have a big install to still go outside, right outside the courtyard in the front of City Hall. I, I don't know.
There's nine, yeah, there's nine or ten pieces that we already own that have to be installed outside. There's a whole selection of art that was inside our old buildings that's going to be reinstalled in the new building. And then there's several more new pieces that go into the lobby. In the next sixty days, I believe all of them will be in in the next sixty days. The last one that will be put in is the large art that goes in the lobby above the, all of the front storefronts, looking out over the green. I think that's going to be the longest lead time to get that in, but I think within sixty days, it all should be in.
That's for the town, literally down the Town Square Commission or not, the firehouse. That's kind of running on a separate schedule, and that, I don't have a timeline on that yet. I know the Art Commission is still working on that.
Got you. Thank you.
Commissioner Katz?
No questions at this time for Steph.
All right. Question I have, I guess, is the RFP for the vendors, for the cafe and the incubator. When do we feel that those are going to go out?
So that's a great question. So we've been working with, if you, as you're aware, part of our development team, master development team that we selected. We did also select a commercial broker, which is Avison Young, a very well-known broker. We've been working with Keith O'Donnell, who's their lead for the last couple months, developing the RFP. He's getting the, you know, develop the RFP as we figured out what we wanted. We gave it to him. He went out to the market preliminarily and said, okay, if this comes out, would there be any interest? He's had some interest coming back, so there is interest, definitely interest in the space. So now we're going to finalize that, and then we're going to go back out to the market. And when that comes back in, we're still working on the final process, how that goes, but we will definitely keep everybody informed as we go through that process. My goal is to have something out in the next thirty to forty-five days that's out in the market. This type of market doesn't take a long time to select because, again, most of the vendors that would be interested have already been notified that something's coming, and we do have some local vendors, and they, we've been, they're all on the list. I know there's several local restaurants that are very interested in expanding, and we've contacted them all. They're all on the list. They'll all be. We definitely want them to propose on the space. So I'm hoping to have the RFP out within thirty to forty-five days. We will let you know in an update as soon as it's out.
All right, appreciate that. So I was hoping for. I've had a couple of restaurateurs ask me about the different cafe spaces for the, was it the Civic Center and the City Hall? So the district energy plant, one of the concerns and thoughts that came to my head is regarding the air exchange. You know, I've heard certain buildings where the intake of the air conditioning unit, if someone had COVID-nineteen, that they didn't have maybe a UVC or some sort of high-end filter that the virus was able to get through the air duct system. And I just wanted to, if you give any information regarding that, regarding the chilled air?
Yeah, absolutely. So the chilled water plant is a closed circuit, so that doesn't have anything to do with that. That's something that happens inside the building. The air is pulled in from return docks, and then it's cooled, and then it's pushed back out into the offices. We do have a fairly high-level filtration system on our air system, but we do not have the UV or ozone treatment for viruses. When we designed the building, this wasn't, to be perfectly honest with you, it wasn't a thought. Even though we practiced and we knew we had pandemics in our emergency planet, it was in nobody's really vision. With that said, we designed space to add that equipment. It is something that we did not propose in this next year's budget, but that's because, again, we were doing the budget in February, and we weren't quite there yet. So it is something that we talked about internally with my staff, with our facilities. There is, there is room. The question is, is what does that cost? All the buildings have the ability, the new building have the ability to put something in like that, once we bring something back. So I think it's really, it's something that we have to internally look at and determine what does that cost? What is the best type of systems? Because there's many different types out there. And is it something we want to invest in? And if it is, then we'll figure out a way to do it.
You know, I'm glad we're at the city commission because I'd like that information, you know, at next meeting, especially because we have not finalized the budget. This is something that, whether it be the flu, whether it be the common cold, we understand that the sick time associated with someone getting a disease is great. And that's kind of why we have the clinic. And so if we are able to do, you know, help reduce the virus or viral air exchange, that's something that I definitely would like to know the reasonability of that before we finalize the budget. And, and the, I think also in regards to the naming rights, is that information out to the public? And the the, I think also in regards to the naming rights, is that information out to the public? Or is it only through our marketer? So it's like that information out on the city's website of how to do any sort of naming rights or for the public to be made aware of?
I'm not absolutely, I I, yeah, Eleanor.
It is on our website. We have a tab for that under our town square. Tab on our website, so we'll look to update that, look at that tomorrow, mayor and commissioners, and see what we need to make it more present and. And maybe more, thank you.
I think if we just do a Facebook post or a social media post regarding it, and I think that would help so with some interest as well.
Great, we'll do that, thank you.
And Lori? Did you have any? Okay. All right, anything else for Colin, otherwise we're going to move on to Mark Heffron with E two L. All right, Mark? See if we got. You're unmuted?
Yes, Mayor Grant. It's always a pleasure to see you and all the commissioners, I certainly enjoyed our event today as we showed distance and. Beautiful scene to see your hundred year balloons and Ty, I hope you do make the hundred years. Very young guy. Good with that. To answer a couple of the key questions. I would like to talk about the coronavirus just briefly, I know Mayor Grant, you asked about how that impacted our project. We had a couple incidents where we had to shut down the city hall operation and literally clean the building from top to bottom. That included two cases, the chambers was also part of that. We did have some delays in delivery, which has impacted the police station with some of the gates and specialty items that. Secure the building, but we are overcoming all that, we've stayed on schedule, we've stayed on budget. Wouldn't tell you it hadn't been a challenge, it certainly has been, but none of us prepared for this, we. Started this project as a team and we've come through it as a team, so. In all cases, we're just so happy that the building's now occupied and all the buildings occupied, as Colin mentioned. We do have some work to clean up as far as punch lists and a few remaining items, but we're super excited. Colin's done my work in far as talking about the amphitheater and the playgrounds, they're coming together quickly, we met today after the. Ribbon cutting with the contractors and designers and that work is now scheduled to be completed. Enforced by the end of August, there will be some work going on with the amphitheater as far as sound system. And the delivery and installation, but also the testing lab, we need to make sure that the system works and function as the. C R A and the city have requested. And I hope you can hear me well, so I'm sorry I can see you and hear you well, but. I I would like to touch on the naming rights. We have sent out as a organization, E two L, personally signed and sent letters to over fifty companies. We know that the program had to be shut down because we're forgiving most cases at least two to three. Wars a week, and when that happened, obviously, we could not, when the COVID. Ban was placed on coming into the public arena or coming into private spaces, we curtailed that. We certainly are ready to bring that back in, I think your idea of going social media is excellent. We certainly are ready to start going those phone calls and seeing how we can do that forward. We do have a underwriter for naming rights with J Steve. For furniture inside of the part of the furniture that's been designated for the new culture center. So now that the city has moved in their staff, we're ready to do that, particularly for the quarters, really. Bring in, bring in the arts and the other component that are critical to that. I'll I'll go into parcel one, as we've shared with the city many times, we've we've got a sale and purchase agreement that we've exchanged. There there's three items, one is the turning lane that comes off of Boynton Beach Boulevard. Then the easement that comes between parcel one and two that allows access into the garage and the. Northeast First Street Avenue, First Avenue. And then lastly, just making sure that we have parking to service that site, which I know the city's been working on extensive agreements. For all the parcels as as relates to. Parking and having easements and. Agreements that constitute payment programs to cover that parking cost. We personally continue to have dialogue, we signed an L O I over eighteen months ago for a brand, I'm not able to publicly disclose that. We have a lot of interest from what I would call the higher end brands out in the marketplace. Hyatt called us last week, we talked to the Marriott folks. The the challenge for the whole marketplace today. Is hospitality, as you know, drastically lost their revenue sources. So it's obviously that as the market comes back, the newer products. And and we say this, I appreciate your comment about H V A C systems, because we're at a unique time in our business where. We can integrate all the the new technology, all the related. Surface cleaning, you know, brass on handle knobs. U V, we have it in our house, why not have it in your buildings? So we certainly see this as an advantage as far as the development side to bring that in to bear on this project and the site. The timing of that obviously is all driven by the availability of parking. And obviously, we we know the city has signed an agreement for the temporary parking. I think it just boils down to when we would have the permanent parking structures and be able to move forward with that, so. I'll stop there and any questions are welcome.
Vice Mayor, I see your hand up.
Mark, thank you for your presentation. You mentioned that a lot of this development was dependent on the parking garage situation, and as we all know, that's been delayed. I'm going to ask the same question to both developers, could you tell us from your point of view? What exactly is happening with the parking garage? Why is it delayed? And what needs to be done to get it moving?
Well, this is, I know I'm not muted, so I'll speak to that issue. I know a lot of conversations have occurred between the private and the public. Or is structuring the agreements for parking as far as paying for that parking garage over time? For parcel one, you know, that's tied to the northern garage. South garage was scheduled to go first, so I believe it becomes a sequential event when. Now, as you have temporary parking on the north side, you really have to have the south parking garage bill. Move that parking. Over and and then the north parking garage could be developed. We have even talked about on a podium, parking garage under parcel one. We we're still looking at different designs that might allow that, we have presented those to the city, but we have had those those discussions.
Thank you. My question, you know, first is a comment that I have is that I believe you're the one that you're, takes the the aerial drone shots. And, you know, the what we see here with the ocean in the background, our downtown Costa Costa five hundred ocean Marina Village, great picture. Really shows, you know, benefits of the city of how close we are to the ocean. And I guess, you know, I was with you on the the tourism board. And you you mentioned one thing in regards to possibly switching it with parcel parcel one and parcel three. My only question, though, is in regards to the the nature of the hotel. You know, at first, you know, before COVID, it was kind of a business oriented downtown that we were trying to do, and I was hoping that maybe. With your talks with the hotel year, that it comes to be more of a family oriented, maybe a lot more suites. Because we have the children's schoolhouse museum, we have our civic center, we have the playgrounds. And so we lend our downtown to more of a a family friendly. Rather than a business, because I don't know if we're even going to have any office spaces. In that area. So that's something that I just wanted to to make the comment on regarding the hotel and that it's. We we look to make sure that it's fits for Boynton Beach, because I don't know if a business hotel style hotel would work very well. In this area.
Well, I think Mayor Grant that. We have always planned a select service hotel, because the ideal thing is that that hotel. Serves both the culture center. And and longer term stays in Boynton, obviously, that's going to drive revenue. Type of crowd versus a corporate type event, albeit you would want both available to. The the Boynton Beach Town Square development. As far as two parcels, we've spoken of this, you know, a year ago. Whether you do a boutique hotel on a parcel three, or you do a what I would call. A rival hotel, you know, I come out of Orlando and we we have the Bohemian. Which is our downtown hotels. Our sports arena, the concept started with that, but we certainly are flexible to accommodate what's best for Boynton Beach and. In in given that, and I know I welcome the opportunity to serve on this tourism council, we're going to do what's right for the city. And if that decision was, hey, let's get something going on parcel one in order to get this. Project moving forward, we're we're open. Whatever that design and that development wants to be in the best interest of the city.
All right, thank you so much. All right, any other questions from Mark Heffron and E two L? All right, thank you so much, Mark, and we'll go to John Markey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, John Markey, Boca Raton, Florida, developer of the private sector of town square. Thank you for having me tonight and congratulations on a hundred years. We've had such a a good meeting so far with Commissioner Hayes' comments on our our passing heroes and icons and. Our hundred year anniversary. I hate to be the one who brings bad news, but at the same time, I can say that. There's no one here on this on this call that hasn't looked out the door and knows we're in a COVID economy. So I can tell you without a doubt that in the finance market in this COVID economy, that's exactly what the problem is with getting going on the private sector. That said, I I can offer up some solutions and I'm going to ask the city for some help. But what I would like to say is, you know, any of these types of developments, the hardest thing to underwrite in any community is always parking. And when that structured vertical parking, it's very expensive. And it's a pretty simple equation, if the the rental rates or the income rates or in other instances for sale rates don't cover that cost, it doesn't work. We're so close on those profit margins in a project like this. In a market like this, that it's really pushing the market, I've told this commission from the beginning. That we're trying to push what the market wants here as far as pricing and product. And that that's that's true. And I have no problem with that, and I'd like to say, you know, with all humility, you picked the right guy to do that. I've done that in Boynton already, I would remind you that in the middle of a depression. And and I say depression, because I don't know if it was a recession at your house, but it was definitely a depression at my house. In the middle of a recession, depression, whatever we're calling it, in two thousand and ten. I bought a defunct weed patch in Cortina Renaissance Commons. And brought that back and the mayor likes to remind me that BlackRock and myself made a good profit on that, and that's true. But it's after investing in a weed patch in the middle of a depression. And waiting eight years to make that profit and spending about fifty million dollars to make it happen. Part of that is the city now has hundreds of millions of dollars worth of tax base added. And I I appreciate everything the city did to help me get there, but I'd like to say that. You know, we did that together. It took two of us, I can do that again here, even though we're in a COVID economy, I remain bullish on Boynton Beach. The same as I told BlackRock, the largest investment firm in the in the world, in the middle of a depression that I believed in Boynton Beach, and they went along with me. I will do that again here. So I believe that, you know, this economy recovers, I believe the set, the metrics of this economy are still sound. Everything about COVID is an external economic force. So that having been said, to me, to my way of thinking, sounds too much like an excuse. I can see a way out of this and I can see a way to accelerate these garages and this entire project. Almost a year ago, last August, I started talking with city staff. About accelerating both garages, north and south. By having the city sign as a cosigner, as a guarantor, co-guarantor on construction loans for the garages, both garages. At that time, we sat down with Iberia Bank, I brought that relationship to the table and Iberia was willing to finance both garages a hundred percent loan to cost. If the city would sign along with me as a co-guarantor. We tried that for a couple of months. And eventually the city decided that they did not want to do that, that that was too much of a risk. I mentioned to the city that, yes, there's some risk, but there's no way that Iberia Bank lets me out of my personal guarantee. Just because the city is also on the loan. So I would like to ask the commissioners, the commission, Mr. Mayor, please instruct your staff to open those negotiations again. I still believe that with the city, with me, we can get that done. It's a long shot, it's harder, because there are no construction lenders on earth who are lending money right now. And, you know, that's just a fact, that's the way it is. Until this COVID situation improves, banks are just not loosening their belts. The other thing that I would like to ask the city commission to do, and it's really the way we started underwriting this project four years ago, when it was just a dream. We were counting on tax increment financing. You have the methodology, you have a C R A, you're getting a tremendous bump in tax base when this project is is completed. We started underwriting this based on TIF funding coming in. I'd like to ask the commissioners and the mayor again to please instruct staff, instruct Michael Simon to start conversations about how we can employ some TIF. Financing in this project. It's necessary, the market's changed, the world's changed, we all know that. So I I'm asking the commission for help on those items. And then the last item, Commissioner Romulus is always good about saying to me, what do you need, what can I do to help? So I have one last thing that I would like to request of the commission, I need some help getting the easements on these properties cleared up. I'm I'm very grateful that the city attorney and my attorney have an excellent working relationship, it certainly makes things much easier. But we're at a point here where we need to clean up some of the temporary construction easements and parking easements on these parcels, you've you've had those easements, C F P has had those easements. Since we first signed these contracts. I need to get them cleared up, I'm at a point here where I cannot even legally get on these properties without. Construction vehicles or staging happening, we're looking at a picture right now where you see a couple of construction vehicles, so that's almost over. So, you know, luckily, our mutual attorneys worked out easements that would clear all this up and part of it would be a temporary, new temporary parking easement. That would go on parcel two and parcel three. That would clean up all these, we gave termination of these easement documents that the city attorney worked with us on. To the city six months ago in January, nothing's happened. I need to get the temporary parking easement done on the temporary parking that you have to make sure that. I and my mortgage lender are insured in this situation. It's untenable that's not happening. So I'd ask the Commissioners, please, please, give this a push. The work is done. Our attorneys have worked this out. I need a push to get these easements cleaned up. So I see a way for us to move this forward. I'm asking the Commission to give direction to staff to please work with me on these items. The three items being co-guarantors on the loan, TIF financing and cleaning up the easements. And we can get these garages accelerated. I've known for some time. That accelerating both garages was the key to this project.
Is there anything further?
That's it for me unless there are questions to respond to.
Um, you know.
Questions, Mayor.
All right. You'd like to begin?
Sure. Thank you very much. John, thank you for for coming today. I've got some questions and just like in the past. You know, a lot of them are centered around timelines. I'd like to know, you know, what the horizon looks like and it's certainly shifted over time. Each time it's been brought up. So, you know, I'm asking for now another assessment of. When we can anticipate completion of the the southern parcel, the residential and the parking garage. And also the northern parcel is, as it's been described to me from city staff, the agreed upon completion dates right now. Are May of 2021 for the south end and December of 2021 for the north end. Are you able to? To state that you're able to comply with those established timelines or is there any issue with with what's been established thus far?
No, Mr. Commissioner, those timelines are completely, completely gone. Again, you know, I don't want to blame it completely on the world changing and the economy changing, but it's a fact. So those timelines, it's just impossible to meet those. What I've told the city is, you know, at this point, I will live up to my commitment to finance this south garage and the south building together. I can do that. As soon as there's a construction lender or any debt that loosens up. I've also told the city I don't have a problem with with the equity portion of that construction loan. You know, for a project of this size, that building and that parking garage, the the equity portion of that is $22 million. I'll write that check. All I need is someone to finance the debt and no bank on earth is doing that right now. And to be honest with you, the bad side of that is not just that I don't know when they will. I don't think it's going to happen in this year. I don't see banks loosening up as long as COVID is doing what COVID is doing. So, you know, I can't change that and I can't tell you when. So. I'm telling you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I apologize. A follow up question real quick then. So I. I could be wrong because it was, you know, months and months ago and a lot certainly happened in between now and the past that I'm going to reference, but I thought. That the financing had been secured to start construction in April of of this this year. I can understand that, you know, because of COVID and other conditions going around that there might be delays associated with it, but. I was under the impression that, you know, financing had been secured to begin developing, I believe, the 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 south parcel. And I could be wrong in the the timeline here, but. I was under the impression financing had been secured to begin construction this past April.
That that was very close to being true. We worked with staff for several months and. My current mortgage lender, Bridge Invest on this property. Bridge Invest was willing to finance not just the south garage commissioner, but the north garage. If the city would also pre-buy the garages, which, you know, we have pre-buy arrangements in our current contracts. It was a matter of accelerating that. We were very close to getting that deal done with Bridge Invest, with the city, you know, committing to pre-buy, which would have made that loan happen. And we were within days, literally, you know, staff, Bridge Invest, myself, we were within days of getting that to happen when COVID came along. And the entire finance world shut down.
Okay, um, thank you. And so. I guess my question going forward is if in order to to move this project forward. The CRA would hypothetically have to invest, you know, millions in additional TIF funds. And the city would have to become the the risk bearer for for garage construction. It it's getting more and more difficult for me to to see that as a perceived pathway forward because it sounds like the. The P3 partnership is not really showing to be a partnership if if we. Fund everything and we bear the risk for everything. So I just, I don't know if the the requests being made. You know, at as I guess, you know, the shareholder here, you know, we're the the party that's financed most of this and we've we've given the land and incentives. I don't know if it's better to proceed by by doubling down. Or or to to investigate whether the path forward is feasible. And and I don't know if that that obviously might require clarification through a greater conversation. And I believe it should be a public conversation involving city staff and and your your firm to. I feel like there's some circumspect answers coming from all sides and I'm not clear what's going on or what the timeframes or what the expectations are anymore. And that worries me that we had some very concrete deliverables and and, you know, COVID and all that obviously taken into consideration, but now we have. Just question marks and and I don't know if if shoveling more money into it from the city and. You know, solidifies this P3 or converts it into a an entire city project, at which point. You know, we should, we should be in a position to take the reins back if we're doing everything other than than building it. So I'm. I'm just, I think I'm looking for clarity. Because if the path forward is to double down on the investment and bear additional risk and spend additional millions of dollars. That that's a great deviation from everything we planned and and expected. And I don't know if that's the path forward. So I guess that's the. I'll close my little rant there. I'm just. I'm uncomfortable with the lack of clarity that I have about timelines, funding, the 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 nature of the project now, if we're swapping parcels around and potentially moving things, there's just a lot. A lot of the picture has become very muddy and I'm. I'm very concerned about that and I think that that might necessitate a public discussion in the near future to clear all this up. Because I I don't like, I don't like where I'm at personally in my understanding. And thank you.
Well, Commissioner, I respectfully, I take exception to your assumptions because the scenarios that I've offered cost the city nothing. I am still the one on the loan. I'm still the one paying the interest. I'm still the one underwriting this in a scenario where you're a co-guarantor. If we do TIF money, I am the one bringing the tax base. TIF is a common, common way to get this kind of thing done in communities all across the country. It's acknowledged as how you get over the hump, provide that TIF money. I'm not asking you for anything that you're spending. I'm asking you to share some of the wealth of tax base that I create to get this to happen. It's not costing the city money. These proposals that I'm bringing aren't costing the city more money. You are not doubling down.
Well, and and I'll. I'll push back on that, I guess, a little because if if we become the the. The guarantor of the debt, then, you know, hypothetically, if things did go south, we would become liable for all that. And if if the the TIF money, the the tax revenue generated from these projects. We've already put inland and put in millions in incentives to get this project going. So it's. It is granted, it's it's new money. It'll be, you know, found money because of the development and increased taxable value, but we've. We had an agreement that that incorporated a lot of these notions already in the form of the land and and the millions in upfront incentives to get the ball rolling. So. I I don't mean to belabor the issue, but if if we're going to have to increase our stake in this. Then, you know, at what point do we not say that we should take back control of this? Are you? John, are you in a position to state whether, if if we were to move forward with some of the suggestions you're making? Would you be willing to sign a legal document that makes crystal clear that under no circumstance can this property be flipped? That if we were to. Guarantee the parking lot development and, you know, if TIF were involved. Because right now there's no assurances that if we guarantee the parking or if we make TIF agreements that just like any other TIF agreement in the city we make, that someone couldn't kind of package that. Are you willing to state and potentially if if the board, you know, were inclined to ask, did you would sign documents making clear that you? Have to develop these parcels, you cannot flip or sell these parcels at any time, you know, without the 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 city's discretion on that.
I would most certainly sign that agreement on parcel seven. I don't think. That it needs to be done on the other two parcels. I would sign an agreement that said it wouldn't be done without the city's consent. But I can tell you that, you know, I'm approached all the time, as I know the city is, by other people who would like to develop on those pieces of property. If that's the case and it's in the best interest of the city and it's the best interest of of my firm, I certainly would do that. But, you know, I would commit to, it would have to be a mutual consent from the city. Yes.
Thank you. All right.
So, you know, I want to address the the incentives that have been done, you know. It just, it's not enough to get this over the hump, not the way the markets changed, not the way the world's changed. And Commissioner Katz, I'd like you to remember, when you approved Riverwalk, we had a conversation and I said to you. You shouldn't be looking at their pretty renderings. You should be looking at their underwriting. Because it's not possible in this market to underwrite that type of construction where we were talking about pedestal 10 story, high architectural finishes. And I said to you, you need to be looking at their underwriting. I'm happy to show you my underwriting all the time and why it's a simple equation, why these things need to be kicked along. And I think at the same time, you as Commissioners need to ask yourself, why isn't Riverwalk coming out of the ground after being approved years ago? Why isn't Ocean One happening? Why is Ocean 500 founder-ing on the marketplace? That's because when I'm telling you about pushing. The market is true. I believe we can do it. I'm a believer. I've done it. I've done it in Boynton Beach at Cortina. And I'm a complete believer. The other option here is wait on the market to come back and I'll finance the south parcel seven and the garage together at the same time and get that done. But I can't tell you what that timeline is because I can't tell you what COVID is going to do and when the market's coming back. So there's another choice. I don't think it's a good choice.
All right. John, I have a couple of questions, you know, the the conversation of millions and upfront incentives. What exactly did the city incentivize you to help with the development?
Well, it was, it was. Essentially free land and some cash. And that's all good and well, but I have to tell you that the land today is not worth what we appraised it for when we did that. We appraised it at $29 million a door as approved. It's not going to appraise for that now and nobody is coming that is willing to offer that, whether it's, you know, me doing this or someone else that we, you know, agree together that is, you know, to to be a buyer. It's not coming. It's not worth what it was, like most of the world.
So the, I understand the land, but you, the the statement was that the city gave you money. I want to know how much money did the city give you?
It was approximately 1.9 million.
Okay. And.
There were also utility work and Colin could expand on that. There was additional incentives as well.
Okay. And has that.
Had ready. That's correct.
And the utility work has been completed?
You, well, yes and no, but that's a separate subject. I would say substantially, I I'm not going to disagree that the city's obligation has been fulfilled, but there's utility work that remains.
We don't put, we don't put natural gas in, Mayor. Our utilities that we committed to have been installed completely.
Okay. And that, you know, okay, so that that's informative to me. The the next question is, is that. COVID hit a long time ago. We're talking almost four months now. Why are we hearing about this now? Is this, you know, I remember I requested the city manager to have this update, I think on Thursday. Were we not going to have an update on this meeting? Because I remember Commissioner Katz says we were supposed to have monthly updates. And this is something that hopefully we should have learned in April or May, not July. So I want to know, where were you with, you know, informing us of all this information?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, are you asking me?
I'm asking you is in the sense of is that you, you being our partner, where, when do we know when something goes wrong? Or right?
I'll apologize, Mr. Mayor, for not making you aware of this sooner. You know, I probably should have had this conversation earlier. You know, and I don't want to pass blame off. I'll take the blame.
And so, you know, for me, you know, when we did started this back in 2018. I was always aware that the it would take longer than expected. I stated to everyone when we started, started the project that it was going to take three years, not two years. Because everyone told me two years and to be safe, I said that extra year. The aspect of that I have is is that, you know, in order, you know, we can't necessarily talk about TIF funding at this meeting. You know, we will have to wait till August to discuss that at CRA. The aspect of the the P3 arrangement is that. The city, you know, if in essence, if you default, we would be owning the the parking garages and paying for them. And therefore, whoever is an owner of those residences would then have to be paying us as as the city. For those parking spaces, if I'm mistaken.
Those are issues that we did work out in our last efforts before COVID. We did work through those issues by and large with the city and the city attorney. To where, yes, you were going to pre-buy the garage as anticipated in our original agreements and we would then be paying and we worked out what that number was for the park.
And so for me, it's it's understandable that the the city with the. With its assets, with its revenue, it's definitely a bigger partner. You know, for example, you know, I understand that we don't own City Hall and the library, that it is owned by CFP. And it's going to be owned by them for 30 years because we issue, we had them issue. The the bonds to pay for everything. And that we're paying them back. And so that's kind of the question. I think it's, you know, I'm okay with the the city cosigning because we need the parking garages built. And you own the property. And if that's the fastest way, then that's what we're going to have to do. As for TIF funding and the CRA, that's another conversation where. It's kind of like, you know, we saw with 500 Ocean, you know, the project got approved to, you know, February of 2018. That means we didn't receive any money until this year or, you know, the 2019, 20 fiscal year. For that improvement value. And so. I'm well aware and we still don't have anybody in those commercial locations. So I'm well aware of the the CRA that it's it's not going to be cheap for us to issue TIF because we're going to want certain. Affordable subsidized housing for that area if we're giving up money upfront. Or for, yeah, for making payments in the backend. And so that's that's kind of my statement and for the the City Commission to weigh in or if we want to have a further discussion or one-on-one discussions with. JKM. That I'm in favor of doing what the city can to be a cosigner so that the garages are built. Because we're going to be using them anyway and that we clean up any sort of parking easements. So that the. So that the that whatever CFP or had gets removed so that JKM can do what they're supposed to do. Mayor?
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Katz, I'm gonna let the the other commissioner speak and then I'll go back to you unless they want you to speak ahead. So I'm not seeing Commissioner Hay or Vice Mayor raise their hand. So Commissioner Romulus, do you want to go ahead or would you like Commissioner Katz? Oh, no, they raised their hands. So Commissioner Romulus, would you like to go next?
Sure. So, you know, I I think I have the same concerns that were expressed by Commissioner Katz and perhaps other, you know, members of the commission that will express this. You know, it it just baffles me that, you know, we we've had updates, we we continue to have updates for these past few months. And this is just coming up now. So it it just baffles me that why are we just finding this out now? And, you know, John, John, I I appreciate the partnership that we've had over the last few few months and years. But there seems to just be kind of constant, just trying to dropping the ball in terms of communication or or issues. And so it it kind of, you know, begs the question of what's really going on? And and is there something that can actually be resolved here? Or are we just kind of delaying the inevitable and and some things, you know, even worse may happen down the line? So I I really would just like some more candor and and frankness from from you. That way we know exactly which way we need to go and we're not holding our breath and anticipating something. But but that's not what potentially is coming down the line. So, you know, I I would really appreciate just some more frankness and and, you know, just not holding off to the last minute when things have gone, you know, down the drain to kind of express what's going on. This is problematic for me because, you know, we're celebrating our 100th, you know, anniversary today and and to hear this and to know that. You know, yes, we understand that there were some delays that occurred. But now it's, okay, well, these reasons are for why the the delay. And and yet it seems like these issues were ongoing. So why, why weren't they expressed sooner? So, you know, that that's my concern and I I would like to hear a better answer other than just, you know, I take the blame and I don't want to hear, I I don't want to point fingers. You know, it, for me, it's problematic and there is a team here. So what's really going on and and let's be completely honest with each other. That way, you know, this is, we're solving the problems before they become bigger.
Well, I I take that to heart, Commissioner, and, you know, I do take the blame. At the same time, you know, I'll I'll tell you that I have not been out of my house in months. And I'm just now getting up to speed on on how to use go-to meeting. You know, I'm I'm somewhat IT challenged. And, you know, to be frank, I I've never been invited to a go-to meeting until today, which I understand the mayor pushed for. Not saying that that's an excuse. I I'm going to say that, yes, I'll make a commitment to keep you more informed more frequently. That's the, that's the thing for me to do.
And I guess Commissioner Hay?
Well, me being the the new guy on the second go around, I feel very uncomfortable with what I'm hearing. Certainly, I want to see the garage on the south end and and all that completed. But the the I have a lot of questions and a feeling that I I've been down this road before. And it's not one that I want to go down again. So for for us to get into any kind of agreement where it puts us at risk, I'd need more information. I need to talk to some people before I do anything like that. I don't I don't feel very comfortable with the what you're saying, John. I I I just, I just don't. And I just feel that at this juncture, even though it it may be delayed a little bit longer, I think we need to arrow on the side of caution. So my position right now is just to, I need, I need further information before I vote one way or the other.
So noted, Commissioner, and I I appreciate your position.
Mayor, this is Jim Sherrill. Could I just jump in one second?
Uh, I was gonna let Vice Mayor speak and then I'll give you the opportunity.
I just wanted to respond to Commissioner Hayes' comment.
Okay. Yes.
The item, thank you. The item on the agenda tonight was simply a report. There's no action item on the agenda. And it would be very important, Commissioner, for you to be brought up to speed. I will personally get with you to do that and run through what the contractual obligations of this transaction are. And what would need to be done, if anything were going to be done, to revise or amend that.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
And Jim, I'll I'll take you up on that as well to get refreshed.
Yep.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I've been, I've been waiting for a while.
No worries.
Thank you, John, for coming here, and I want to be frank, and I think you've been frank with us today. I am largely uncomfortable with what I've heard today and in the previous meetings. You know, it's been one delay after another. From my understanding, there was an agreement, incentives were provided, deadlines were passed on multiple occasions. And the ask today, and I do appreciate you coming with those proposals. It's better to have some proposals to move forward than none. But the ask is for us to double down and to commit to more risk at a time when our finances in the city are, you know, I don't think can bear additional risk. With that being said, I will explore the options that you suggested. But I am not comfortable with what I have heard. And frankly, I feel like I've heard enough. And so we need to make that final decision, we as the board, are we doubling down or are we not? Because it seems like this isn't going anywhere. And now is a time for us to be cautious from a city standpoint with bearing additional risk in our city finances. Not so much about taking additional risks. I will say that of the options that you provided, and this will have to be a separate conversation at the CRA, it seems to me that that may be the less riskier of the two options. But again, that's something that we'll have to flesh out. And and I'll 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 close with that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Or Mr. Vice Mayor, excuse me.
All good.
All right. Well, thank you again for the the update, and I guess this will be on our our next agenda, the the conversation with JKM developers.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Jim and I will reach out and set up some individual meetings with each of you just to discuss what we think of some of the options and some of the options that John has proposed tonight.
Yes.
Thank you.
Including me.
That as well, Lori.
We'll do a a all five of you.
Yeah, at this point, I think we all need an update.
All right. So, uh, thank you, John. And you're welcome. Our next announcement will be from Craig Clark with the library. And so Alan, do we got him unmuted?
Yes, Mayor, I just unmuted. I'm sorry.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay? This is Craig Clark, Library Director.
Thank you. Yes, we can.
That's great. Happy birthday, Boynton Beach. And I'm very excited to announce this evening that the Boynton Beach City Library will open at its new location in City Hall on Monday, July 27 at 9:00 AM. Library hours will be Monday, will be Monday through Thursday, 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And Friday and Saturday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and close on Sundays. Hours and services need have been reduced due to COVID-19. We do request that customers limit their browsing time to 30 minutes and computer appointments to one hour per day so that others may use the library. Due to the pandemic, only a limited number of users can be in the building at one time to maintain social distancing and to keep everyone safe. Meeting rooms and study rooms will only be available once the pandemic is over. We will be offering curbside service, pickup service, and that will be available by appointment by calling 561-742-6390 beginning on July 27. And as a precaution, we're asking that our teens and children under the age of 18 be accompanied by a parent or legal guardian. Because the safety of our community and our staff is paramount. And on a final note, we will be moving the book drop from the temporary library's site to the new location this coming Friday. And it'll be located just off Ocean Avenue and be convenient for customers to drop their their books off and their materials off. Can I answer any questions for you?
You know, my quick question is, I guess, in the regards to the late fees and any books that we have not received, for you to give us an update probably in three to four months. To see how that's going, because I know it's, we're in the middle of everything. And then I guess after that is that are we up to date with our RFID system versus the the UPC?
Yes. Regarding the late fees, sir, we we don't charge them anymore. So we've extended everyone's lending period to August 3. So anyone who has anything checked out is not due until August 3. And our RFID conversion has been completed. And we'll be introducing this new exciting technology to our customers as they come in the new library. We have new, three new self-checkout machines. And also we have two 18-unit laptop kiosks. So people can check out laptops and use in the library.
Wonderful. And my my aspect regarding the late fees is if the library is losing books in the sense is that after three, you know, 90 days, 100 days, after the the three-week time period, the the books have not been returned. That's the, that's the update I'm looking for, I guess.
Oh, I see. Okay, sure. No problem. We, I'll be happy to update you then.
Yeah, I don't need to know all the books. I just need to know the number of books.
Okay. Any other questions?
What is your phone number for us to, for our residents to call? And can they just read their number on the back of their library card to do, I guess, a guided checkout for pickup services?
Yes. So beginning on the 27th, they can give us a call at 561-742-6390. And we will be happy to make them an appointment. We make appointments by 15 minutes each. And we will bring the items down to your car if you don't feel comfortable coming up into the library because it is a pandemic. And we want to make things convenient for our customers. So we will run the items down to them if they choose.
And that will be at the the roundabout or the the semicircle?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. No, it's, I'll be pretty interesting. Okay. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Our next announcement is regarding the the mobile testing site. Ty, do you have information regarding that?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everybody that the mobile COVID testing clinic will be in the Boynton Beach Mall area next to Sears tomorrow morning from 9:00 to 4:00 PM. This mobile clinic is from the Healthcare District of Palm Beach County. It is free. This is the nasal swab test. And this is not a drive-through, so people will have to park and walk up to the mobile clinic. Again, that's tomorrow from 9:00 to 4:00 PM. And the next opportunity will be at the Senior Center next week, Monday from 9:00 to 4:00 PM as well. So we also know that we had a recent event at the Hester Center. If I remember correctly, and feel free to somebody to correct me on this, it was about 300 residents who came and took advantage of that opportunity. We know that the east side is declared a red zone, meaning that there's a high rate of positivity. And that's really important for us to know how many people are actually positive because they need to know if they need to quarantine themselves or not. If they don't know, they may go on and to continue to spread. So we're grateful for this opportunity from the Healthcare District of Palm Beach County. And again, I'll see you all tomorrow morning. I will be there. I will get tested. It is a quick nasal swab and it is free. I do have one more announcement. We're excited to bring back a partnership with Feeding South Florida and Christ Fellowship, who will be having another free food distribution drive this Saturday. And I believe it starts from 9 o'clock, from 9:00 to 11:00 at the mall, same location. And it is free and it is a drive-through, so please help spread the word on that. And that's it. Terms of announcements.
All right. And then our next one would be in regards to food, food distribution? Did you just mention that?
Yes, I did. So that's this Saturday, Mayor, same location, 9:00 to 11:00.
All right. Thank you so much.
Question for Ty.
Yes, Commissioner.
Did you say that when you had, when it was at Isa Hester, you had 300?
There was about 300 residents who came, and I'm glad you brought that up. I looked at the numbers compared to other testing sites in the county. And that's more or less equivalent to what we saw at the Fitteen Ballpark, right? And that's a major testing site. So that tells you that the need in the community for testing is great and people are showing up. And we had a little mobile clinic and they had a big stadium and we had the same turnout. So if that says anything about need, it certainly does.
I'm getting a lot of inquiries about that. And I don't know if you were there, but do you know whether or not there were people waiting in line at, you know, after 4 o'clock that?
I actually was not there. I don't know if there's a staff member who could speak to that. But that's a good question. Because 300 people equates to, what is it, 34 people an hour, right? Is that right? Not sure if my math's correct, but it's a high rate.
Okay. And and the reason I bring that up because I'm getting input from the community that they want more than just once a week. And I I told them, well, if the numbers are there, I think the they have agreed to come as many times as as the numbers were provided, you know. But I I guess I I need to talk about that.
I agree with you. When I had my initial discussions with the county staff about this, my understanding was that if the turnout is there, then they will come back or they will consider coming back. So consider what we have now is more like a pilot. They had bring these three dates, these three, three opportunities. And if there's turnout, they'll continue. And if they're not, they may not come back. So that that was my understanding, and I think they will come back given the turnout.
Okay. Would that be agreeable to more than once a week, maybe twice a week?
I think that's a discussion that I will let Lori have with the county emergency management staff. That's going to be up to them if they're agreeable to that.
I can't, I, we, you know, we, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We, this is a mobile unit that is servicing the entire county. So availability is one of the issues. It is, and the county is the one with the resources to set up the testing sites. They're using the the CARES Act money to be able to provide the testing and assist. There are still well over 60 some odd testing sites in Palm Beach County available to folks that can get a COVID test. Many of which, and that's all on the the county's website and the Department of Health's website. So there is, you know, but the mobile unit, we have them lined up for three weeks. If we get good turnout and and people come out and the need is there, they said they will absolutely continue to come. I don't know if I can get them twice a week because I think there there's a high demand for the the unit to travel throughout the county.
That was my understanding as well.
We can always ask.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That is it for announcements. Alan, would you please open up the questions and the hand raising?
Yes, Mayor Granit, this is Alan. I have opened up the public audience to the extent that people can raise their hand to participate and also ask questions.
All right. And so we'll give it a few minutes or a few seconds for someone to raise their hands. All right, and so we'll give it a few minutes or a few seconds for someone to raise their hands. Or ask a question. And it's currently not showing up. Anyone is raising their hands or?
Mayor Grant, excuse me, I do see Susan Oyer has both a question and her hand raised.
All right, so we will, I will unmute her. And Susan, would you like to speak to public audience?
Yes, thank you. Susan Oyer, one forty Southeast Twenty-seventh Way. First of all, happy centennial to our beautiful city. I I'm blessed that I get to be here twenty-five years ago for our foundation ceremonies. When we hit one hundred twenty-five years ago when the city was founded. And now I get to be here for our centennial and I I feel blessed to be a resident of the best city in the world. And so I wanted to say happy birthday to the city. I hope all of you saw the card I made up and had my neighbors. I went around walking around and had my neighbors, as many as would sign it, did sign it. And because I thought I felt really bad. I feel really bad as a resident and as an activist for the city, and I'm sure you all feel the same. We have missed out on an amazing opportunity. And I'm so mad that we are living with COVID, that we have to deny ourselves the most amazing celebration. Because how often does a city turn one hundred? We are blessed to be one of the oldest cities in the county. We're one of the old original ones. We're not one of the new fangled cities like Boca or Wellington or or Westlake or whatever. We're just so lucky to be in the position we're in. Yes, Lori is laughing. She's heard me say this before. But we're blessed to be one of the old original cities and we should take great pride in in our history and our heritage. And I'm so distraught that we're all having to miss out on such a great celebration opportunity. So I hope when this is over, we can find some money in the budget somewhere and have some kind of proper celebration. Not just you guys getting to walk through the new buildings and having a special tour, but the public themselves. Because I think, you know, we're paying for it too. So we want to see it and I think we should all have the opportunity to celebrate. I don't envy you all listening to and taking notes on your discussion a few moments ago. I've got to say, I'm glad it's you up on the on the dais right now and not me because this is not a fun time. What you guys are going to have to go through the next several months to. Deal with the fundraising issues for this whole town square. So I shall stop now and just wish everyone a happy one hundred and a happy one hundred twenty-fifth. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't see anyone's hand raised.
And Mayor Grant, this is Alan. I don't see any other hand raised either at this time. There was a question that Ms. Oyer had posted, but that was probably prior to when or coincided with the time that she actually just spoke.
All right, so Alan, what I'd like to do is that just to close down the hand raising and allow anybody who has questions to ask those questions. Because it doesn't necessarily interrupt the meeting and go from there. If that's all right with the the City Commission that someone has a question that they can still ask it and that. We may address it at the end of that item.
I would be.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mayor, I have enabled only the feature where citizens can ask questions, but that raise hand is now turned off.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to administrative. I believe that we have one applicant for the the Arts Commission to go from alternate to regular. And that's Robin Lorenz, and I'll make that nomination. Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Our next is consent agenda. Would anyone from the City Commission like to pull an item?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull item, what letter was that? Under the Capitol Project Status Update, I'd like to request an update on the Meadows Park. Do we have somebody from the staff to do that?
Yes, Gary, Gary Dunmire, City Engineer is prepared to, Alan, if you could unmute Gary. If not, it's Andrew.
Yes, I will unmute Gary. Pardon me for one moment here, so. Okay, and Gary Dunmire, in one of the sessions is self muted, so I'm not going to be able to. To unmute that, Gary, if you're listening, if you could unmute yourself, please. And see if that will work for you. As an attendee.
And I just unmuted Andrew Mack as well.
Okay, thank you.
Unmute your phone.
Okay.
All right, Gary, we got you.
Hi, this is Gary Dunmire. I'm the City Engineer. And the update for Meadows Park. Is that Meadows. I'm sorry, I've got two sources of sound here. So Meadows Park is coming along nicely. Last week, they finished doing the asphalt paths as some of you may be aware. The asphalt path was spalling several places. It was a slope that exceeded ADA guidelines. So we were able to get in there and remove all the asphalt. That started in late June. And as of last week, the asphalt path is completely repaired. There are a couple of areas where I'm putting in concrete path, reconnecting the concrete path to Congress Avenue. To the playground and to the pavilions. That work should be done on Thursday and the park should be completely finished on Friday of this week. And the only thing that would be outstanding, maybe after Friday, was maybe some minor irrigation repair and some minor sod repair.
Thank you, Gary. Have the lighting been upgraded?
Could you repeat your question? I'm sorry.
I was asking about the lighting. If I remember correctly, I think there were some discussions about upgrading the lighting to motion sensors.
We have a greater project. What we intended to do this year was. Do the engineering design and then next year do the Capitol Project, which would include redoing the parking lot and improving the lighting. What we had an opportunity to take part of the engineering design and incorporate it into a project this year. So we could do, because I had seventy thousand dollars set aside to do the asphalt repair. So I took that money to do the repair. So next year when we do the park or if we're able to do the park next year. That we won't have to do that portion of the asphalt path. But it is intended to do lighting next year.
Got it. Thank you so much. Well, I appreciate that update. Keep us posted.
Absolutely. Thank you.
May have a motion to approve item six A of the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. May have a motion to approve the consent remainder of the consent agenda. Second, is there a second? Thank you. Appreciate. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, most motion passes unanimously. Consent bids and purchases over a hundred thousand. Someone like to pull one of those items? Saying none, may have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing. The City Commission will conduct these public hearings in its dual capacity as local planning agency and City Commission. We have proposed ordinance number twenty dash zero two eight. First reading, Jim? Jim, yourself muted right now. So.
Can somebody else?
I just texted him, Mayor.
So, so I'm going to read it, and so from what I remember, it's the the whole. Chapter at the beginning, so ordinance number twenty dash twenty-eight and ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending part two. Of the city code of ordinances, chapter fourteen, motor vehicles and traffic, creating a new section fourteen dash fourteen. Parking meters to add definition standards and fees to regulate parking meters in the city. Deleting chapter sixteen, article two, division one, section sixteen dash sixty-one, deleting chapter sixteen. Article two, division three, section sixteen dash eighty-two, to remove redundant language providing for conflicts, severability, codification. And effective date. Do we have a presentation on this?
Yes, Mayor, Andrew, Andrew Mack will. That John or Alan, excuse me, if you would pull up the slides. And unmute Andrew if he's muted.
Okay, thank you. I'm pulling up the slide right now. If you'll bear with me for one moment, please, and. Andrew, are you unmuted?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works. I'm excited to bring this ordinance in front of you tonight. This is the first reading of our our new parking meter ordinance. And I have a quick presentation just to kind of go over that and some of the highlights of that. Is that the first slide? Oh, good. Next slide. Next slide, Alan. Thanks. So just a quick overview of the changes. Obviously, the the first part is enacting a new section fourteen fourteen parking meters. As well as striking existing section sixteen sixty-one. The launching of trailers for fee at Oyer Park and striking section sixteen eighty-one rules and regulations of parking. For vehicles at the Oceanfront Park. Both these are redundant language with when the new fourteen fourteen section is in place. Also, as a part of this ordinance, we are establishing definitions. Locate locations of parking meter zones and the authority to install the meters. Next slide. Operation of the parking meters, cost of the parking, which will be set by resolution. This is the parking device, parking division fee schedule. And attached to the agenda backup was a draft parking fee schedule. For some to to review and the public to see. Also setting parking timely limits, parking meeting, parking meter permits, prohibited acts. Issuance of parking ticket violations, liability for paying the parking ticket violations, penalties for not paying parking ticket violations. Next slide. And then next part I wanted to talk about was the timeline. As you know, back in November, we enacted a awarded a contract to Park Mobile, who's our technology vendor and and kiosk vendor. And that contract was signed and we had, we held our kickoff meeting in June of twenty twenty this year. We are currently doing weekly meetings with them and we have a projected go live date of October first, twenty twenty. Also, as you know, tonight's our first reading and we're scheduled for our second reading of the ordinance on August fourth. And then accordingly, we have a draft, the fee schedule, which is draft on tonight, which is just for informational only. Will actually be for adoption on August fourth. Second, next slide, please. But just a, just a quick overview of how the system works and and what our relationship is with Park Mobile. We wanted a turnkey solution, so Park Mobile is 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 providing that for us. The city will only be responsible for the issuance of the parking violation. And collecting of the cash from the kiosks. So six, initially six kiosks will be installed, four at Oceanfront Park and two at Harvey Oyer Junior Park. Park Mobile will add their zones, our our zones to their existing mobile app, which then make it available throughout the the county. Or whoever is downloaded that app will have availability to use Park Mobile at those locations. Parking tickets will be done via city parking rangers. We will be outfitting a city vehicle, which we actually just received this week, a new park ranger vehicle. So we'll be adding those license plate readers to the vehicle. Next slide. Violations will be pushed to the handheld device and and printed on a mobile thermal printer. That's all a part of the integration that's going to be done with Park Mobile. Parking ticket violation forms will have the pre printed, pre printed instructions on it, how to pre to pay or appeal that ticket. If there was an issue, parking ticket payments or appeals will be conducted online. Through the Park Mobile site or it'll be through a city portal that Park Mobile helps us develop. Collection of unpaid parking tickets will be done by Park Mobile after fourteen days. And secondary collection efforts will also be done by Park Mobile if a person doesn't, a violator doesn't pay it within ninety days. Next slide. So I just kind of wanted to give you a. A picture of how the system works a little bit, and I didn't have all the, all the pictures because we don't have our hardware yet. But this is a picture of how the Park Mobile app is. I'm sure many of you are familiar with it. You know, first you you open the app and you you select your zone. You you pick your parking time, your vehicle, the payment method is click confirm and as easy as that, you're off and running and you're parking. Next slide. Just wanted to give you a little idea, and this is not what our vehicle look like. It's just a kind of a graphic picture of what what it will look like. We'll have a laptop that's tied into this, to the park ranger vehicle, which will be outfitted with the LPRs as you see on the left. Those are LPRs on top of the vehicle that reads the license plate to tell us whether somebody has paid for parking or not. And then on the right hand side, you have a a actual laptop that. When it drives by, it'll alert the park ranger, says, yes, this person is paid, move on, or if this person's in violation. And then they would do a little bit more diligence and either issue them a violation or or talk to the customer. Next slide. This is just another graphical picture of how our handheld device has actually the citation would look on the device. And then this would get printed out and then we would put that on the car. Next slide. And again, Park Mobile, again, this turnkey solution is, this is what we're our our customer portal will do. The motorists will be able to view their accounts. Check on the ticket status, look at violation of the photos. Contest any of the eligibility of a ticket, view the ticket, payment history, view the original ticket or any late notices. And then enroll in payment plans. As well as the the person who's a violator could do, get due dates or late fee reminders or. Or if they were secondary collection eligible. Next slide. Again, this is all customizable. The the screen before was a desktop version. All this is all scalable to a mobile platform, so this is what it would look like on a mobile device. You simply would be able to log in, pay or appeal your ticket and then view the ticket or the images online. Next slide. So I wanted to kind of give you a recap of, because obviously, you know, the fees is this is all new for the city this year. And just give you an idea of what the current rates and versus what we're proposing. So the daily parking rate right now is ten dollars per day. We charge those rates from eight to four PM. We're proposing to go to a dollar fifty per hour rate. And the rates would start at seven AM to nine PM. That's when the park hours are open. More or less, this is, this is no change. If you do the the math, an average stay about six point six, seven hours equates to a ten dollar. Day at the beach and and for some people, it could be less, you know, some people don't stay that long, so. They actually could pay less, you know, if you're instead of paying for an all day ticket at ten dollars, you could go for two hours and pay three dollars. We still will retain the parking permits. We have segregated them a little bit. I've created a resident parking permit and a senior parking permit. We did increase the fees on the resident parking permit from fifty to seventy-five dollars annually. And then we added a new category of senior parking, which we don't currently have, but it it stays at the current rate, which is fifty dollars, so there's no change there. And then same thing similarly with the non resident parking permit. It's two hundred dollars annually and we retain that that rate at the same, so there's no charge, no, no change. Boat ramp and launch fees, we had some changes here and again, I'll go through those. During the week now, we currently don't charge for parking or boat launching at the at the the boat ramp. Weekends is ten dollars per day, which that includes Friday, Saturday and Sunday. We're now changing to a dollar fifty per hour at the boat ramp with a maximum daily fee. It'll be ten dollars during the week. That's Monday through Thursday. And then on Friday, Saturday and Sunday, the max rate would be twenty-five dollars. And what I mean by max rate means if you were going to stay there for a twenty-four hour period. The most you would pay would be the whatever that. the most you would pay would be the, whatever that daily rate would be, which would be ten or twenty-five. So again, similar to the beach, if you're only going to be there for three or four hours, uh, you're not going to pay the full fee uh, versus whether it's the maximum rate. So again, the changes, the ten dollar is, is an increase during the week. Right now, we're not currently charging for, for parking at the boat ramp um, during the week. Um, the weekend rate did increase. I did, again, an average stay of eight to ten hours would generate about a twelve to fifteen dollar fee, which is about a five dollar increase if you're looking at a ten-hour day. Next slide. So I want to give you a, a rate comparison, uh, some of our local neighboring municipalities, uh, just to give you some idea of what, what you see out there as an average. Um, as you can see this, this slide and, and we'll make this available to this, to public if they need to, uh, on the city website, the, the presentation. Um, daily parking rates, Boynton Beach, what we're proposing, dollar fifteen an hour weekday and weekends. As you come across, you can see Delray is a dollar fifty per hour on weekday and, and weekends. Lake Worth is three dollars per hour weekday and weekends, and then Boca is two dollars per hour on the weekday and three dollars per hour on the weekend. Uh, parking permits, uh, we're proposing again for, for just resident is seventy-five dollars. Delray is ninety annually. Lake Worth is substantially lower at forty, but they don't have as many. Um, you don't have the, the availability to park in any spot like in Delray or Boynton. So they, they limit the number to fifty spaces and then Boca Raton is sixty-two dollars annually. Senior parking, uh, we're, we're going to, we're proposing at fifty dollars. Delray Beach is at ninety-five. Uh, Lake Worth is forty and Boca Raton is sixty-two. Uh, boat ramp fees, the city, the Boynton's, uh, dollar fifteen an hour with a max rate of ten dollars for the weekday and twenty-five dollars for the weekend. Uh, I couldn't find any good data for Delray, so I, I just have an N A there. Lake Worth is a ten dollar daily fee, um, seven days a week. There's, their lot is much more smaller. Um, so they don't generate as much parking. And then Boca Raton, who's, who's, uh, ramp is a, a pretty significant ramp. They charge twenty-five dollars daily for a Palm Beach County resident and sixty-five daily for a Palm Beach County non-resident. And next slide. With that, I can answer any questions you may have for the public.
So Vice Mayor, would you like to begin?
Yes, uh, thank you, Andrew, for that presentation. Andrew, I just want to clarify some, some items. The proposal today is really just on the boat, the Harvey Oyer Park as well as uh, the Oceanfront Park. Is that right? Just on those two locations?
Correct, correct. The, uh, the ordinance is, is, is what we're considering today. It just enacts us the authority to, uh, install the meters. And then when we do the resolution, which again, the, the, the draft fee schedule resolution, that's where we dictate where the locations and the rates are. So yes, right now, we're only proposing, uh, location and rates for Oyer Park and, uh, Oceanfront Park. Yes, sir.
Right. And, and also for clarity, um, because I saw the draft of the schedule of the fee schedule and you had both annual passes as well as, uh, the daily numbers. So for people who want to continue with the parking, uh, passes, they can still do that? So this is not a complete, uh, just shifting to one system and one system only, but people can have the option to do either or?
Um, for the beach parking and, uh, yes, there's still availability of the, uh, the parking permit. Um, we are moving away from parking permits at the, at the, uh, Oceanfront Park. So currently we are, we will still offer them at the beach, but not at Oyer.
Okay. Well, that's good to hear. Um, and I'll, I think I'll leave it at that for now. Um, I do have some additional questions, but they'll come up in time.
Sure.
All right. Um, so I'm glad you say that, uh, the, it was proposed to increase the rates for the annual per, uh, parking permit for the, our residents, because I'm not in favor of changing the system and increasing the rates this year. I'd be okay, you know, keeping it at fifty dollars this year and then increasing it sixty dollars next year and do the incremental. I don't understand why we're asking our residents to pay twenty-five dollars more and we're not asking non-residents to pay more. Uh, specifically when we're asking non-residents to pay less unless they go attend, uh, be at the beach for more than six hours and, uh, and two-thirds of an hour. Um, I'd like to also state that I'm okay because we've always had in the past regarding a tool, two different system of, I think it's five dollars during the weekdays, um, and ten dollars on the weekends or during ten dollars in the season, that we have that sort of dual system that it's, uh, you know, a dollar during the, the week and a dollar fifty during weekends and national holidays is what I'd propose, um, for the, the city commission because, you know, part of, uh, our presence is that they're no longer, for those that who only pay cash can no longer pay cash. Is that correct, Andrew?
No, um, we do have the, we will have the opportunity to collect cash at the beach, the kiosks that we're installing. You can pay with coin, cash, or credit card. So you can pay with cash. Yes, sir.
Okay, and I'm glad to hear that, that people can still use, uh, cash. Um, you know, I have Park Mobile on my phone. I think it's, it's a very easy app. Once you spend the time and get the, your car registered, it, it's going to be very easy. Um, and that way, let's say you want to spend more time at the beach, you can always upload more money before your time's out, just like any other old-school meter. Um, and that's
One, one other thing, Mayor, one other thing I'd like to kind of about Park Mobile, that's a new thing that'll be, um, not new, but new for us is the, you know, the availability of parking at the beach. So if you're looking through the Park Mobile app, you will be able to see how many spaces are available based on the number of people at the beach. So this should say that you're at home and it's a nice day and you see there's only three spaces left, you may want to rush out to get it. You will be able to do that through the Park Mobile app.
So for annual permit holders, will they have to sign in that they're there through Park Mobile?
Um, they'll, they'll be registered, uh, and, and when the park, when the park rangers drive through the LPRs, they will tag the cars and see what's there. Yes.
Okay, so that it's, it's a constantly updated system?
Yes.
All right. And then, um, can you go back to the beginning of the, the slideshow?
Alan, can you, yeah, thank you.
Is there more? Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah. So the, so, yeah, go one more overview of ordinance, uh, continued. So, um, you see all the, the titles that we have here. Um, I'd like, uh, if Jim or someone can, you know, fill in with the, the subject of basically operation of parking meters that we give our public the actual, um, ordinance language, um, kind of like, you know, with these, uh, titles on it so that people know that they can find it on the website because beach parking is very important for a city that has beach in its name. And, uh, that's kind of why, uh, we want to make sure that we are giving out all the information that we can. Um, because there were rumors on the internet that says we're getting rid of our lifeguards and that they're, we're getting rid of annual I want to make sure that, Jim, you make it some noise.
I'm here.
That's, we could, we could hear you. Um, so I just want to make sure that we give the public all the information as we can, um, of the ordinance, uh, before second reading so that it's on our website that says this is with, uh, the differences of the, the parking, um, from what it was to what it is now, so that there's no confusion. Um, because, uh, you're like, you stated October first is when everybody would need to get new annual permits. But, uh, you know, I look forward to, uh, making sure that, uh, people can park at our beach and at Oyer, uh, Junior Park. And that way, uh, that we're moving into the twenty-first century, I'm just not okay with, uh, increasing the rates um, as much, especially for our residents or for our annual, uh, pass and for the, the hourly rate to be less during the weekdays.
So Mayor, I know that, uh, you're asking about the, the ordinance. I mean, the, the ordinance is attached to the gen item of the public, obviously, if they have a chance or opportunity, we can make that available, um, at City Hall. If somebody asks for it, we can print it out and, and provide it to them. Um, as a part of this, um, implementation, we will be doing a, a, a great, Pope Mobile as a part of their package gives us a, uh, a kickoff campaign, an implementation, so, uh, we'll be using their social media platforms as well to educate the public and as well as to, uh, to promote the new parking system.
Okay, and, uh, I had some, uh, questions online. Um, one from Ace, Tilton Ratcliffe, any parking options to similar to that for seniors for parking with disability placards? Um, I believe the answer is that we have senior parking available at fifty dollars, uh, per year. And that
Correct.
And we have handicap spots, uh, for their spots, however, uh, those spots are not free.
Correct.
All right. The, the next question is, does this mean when we go to the new City Hall, we have to pay for parking? And the answer is no.
Uh, just rumors.
And the, the question is, is it possible that you will have to pay to go to our new downtown in the future? Yes, it is possible, but it's unlikely based upon the conversation we had, uh, right now. Okay, and the, the question is, is that, um, and I think, uh, the, the commission will be okay with this, is that we have a senior pass, but we do not, um, so the, the question is, I have an accessibility placard, but not, I'm not a senior, so no reduced fees for disabled people. Um, uh, that was a question from Ace, Tilton Ratcliffe. Currently, we're keeping the, the rates the same for seniors and the general public. Um, and I think that's next year when we, uh, if we consider to raise rates, we give, um, uh, a discussion regarding, um, handicapped persons, um, and the, the general public and seniors in our conversation. And that is it for the, the questions. Uh, we got another one from Michael Wilson. Will there, will there be digital signage at park entrances advising status of lot, i.e. available or lot full? Um, my answer would probably be that it is, with any sort of signs would have to be in accordance with Ocean Ridge, uh, sign ordinances. And so we would have to discuss with them, um, before we put up a digital sign, if that's possible.
Correct. Right now, that, that's not planned, but again, as I said, as far as the Park Mobile app, um, there, there will be the possibility of seeing the availability of parking at the beach.
All right. And so is there any other questions from the, the city commission?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, Alan, would you also allow the, the raised hand icon for this being first reading?
Yes, Mayor, I will enable that feature right now. Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hey?
Yeah, uh, Andrew, um, i- i- if all goes well on the second reading, I guess that's August fourth, uh, when would be an anticipated effective date for all of this? And secondly, would this then go online so that, uh, the public will have access to it?
So right now, we're anticipating, um, the meters would probably go live in September. Um, we wouldn't change the rate structure over to, until the infrastructure's in and we're able to, uh, charge for parking. So, um, the, as far as the ordinance after the fourth, um, the actual ordinance would be, um, enacted and, uh, and will be enforceable. Um, we don't, we, we won't change it until September. There'll be some transition period between September and October um, to do that. As far as the ordinance being published online through our, our publisher, which is AM Legal, that's going to take some time. Uh, we will, we can make it available, like I mentioned, at the City Hall. Um, and I can work with, uh, the I T staff, the possibility of putting a copy of the ordinance on our web somehow to, to, to get the information out there.
Thank you, Andrew.
All right, and I do see, uh, Ms. Oyer with her hand raised. Susan, uh, did you want to speak on this item as well? Or is that your hand raised from a previous, uh, question? All right. Um, she's not responding. And it's from a previous question. Okay. Then, um, is there anyone else from the commission?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that, you know, in terms of this ordinance, you know, it's a green light for me. Uh, this just sets all the definitions. It's the foundational items. But I do have to agree with one of the things you said about increasing the rate for residents. I'm not in favor of that as well. Um, if anything, you know, if you have to increase anything, increase it for non-residents, but definitely not for our, if you, you know, if we can't avoid it, we have to make that choice. I would not impose that on our residents and most certainly not this year. So I do want to say that if we are going to have this system, A, let's make sure we can do both. People who want to do passes, they can do passes. If they want to do, um, the meter, they can do the meter, uh, but this system needs to stay the same in terms of, of the cost. Now is not the time to be burdening residents in, in, in any way.
All right. And if I don't, uh, see any other from the city commission, I'll ask, uh, for a motion to approve.
So move, Mayor.
Say it. All right, and, uh, Jim, are you there now?
I am here.
And did you hear me read the ordinance correctly?
I did. You did a wonderful job, but I'll read the next one if you like.
Uh, I'll be more than happy to allow you to do that. All right. We have a motion, a second, seeing no further discussion, may have a roll call, please.
I can listen to you.
Yes.
Commissioner Cat?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Hi.
Commissioner Romney?
Hi.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Bill is five, though.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, uh, if, if you don't mind, um, just, I know you're talking about the fees and I want to make sure I, I, I get the backup for the next meeting, uh, on August fourth to match your wishes. So just if you give me a consensus, if that's what you want for the resident pass to be fifty dollars.
Um, we heard it from, uh, the Vice Mayor, anyone from the
And I would agree with that. I would agree with that, too.
Okay, and in addition, in addition, I mentioned regarding, uh, a dollar an hour during weekdays and non-holidays. Is that something the, the commission would agree to as well?
Could we pull that up on the PowerPoint first so I can just take a look? Where is my? Could somebody with the computer show that on the PowerPoint?
Alan. Move it forward, Alan.
Move it forward. Okay, thank you.
What do you have?
There you go. Stop right there.
And there's one more that is for the comparison with the other municipalities.
And, and again, we, we, you know, we'll have another opportunity at August fourth. I just wanted to make sure I have it presented to you so that, so that, um, you can amend it as well at that meeting, too, you know, if you had to decide that's what you want to do. So I can present it as is, or we can, I can go ahead and change it. It seems like consensus on the fifty dollar for parking for residents. And then you can further discuss the rate, the, the hourly rate at, uh, the next meeting.
That sounds good.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
If you could just bring back any information, if there was anything budgeted for these amounts, I just want to make sure if we're not changing it. With changing these numbers, we're not changing anything within the budget.
Yes, I can do that as a part of my fee schedule, um, presentation, if you like. Yes.
All right. Uh, seeing, seeing no more, uh, comments, we will move on to those ordinance number twenty dash zero two seven, second reading.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida amending the land development regulations, chapter three zoning, article four, use regulation, section three D, use matrix note thirty-four, updating the home occupational provisions in part to allow one non-resident to assist with operating the home-based business, providing for conflict severability.
For right for conflict severability codification and an effective date.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion from the city commission?
None for me.
All right.
Not for me.
All right, and anyone with hands raised or new questions? Not seeing any. So with that, I will uh close and uh have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Cat?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry? Commissioner Hay?
Hi.
Commissioner Romano?
Hi.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Conserga?
Yes.
Vote is five oh.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll have a discussion from our police chief, Michael Gregory, who will discuss the hashtag eight can't wait recommendation. Put forth from the five oh one C three organization campaign zero, an update will be provided on current use of force standards and the implementation of those standards. So. Give him an opportunity. See, sometimes he puts as Chief Michael Gregory, other times it's Michael Gregory.
This time it's chief.
All right.
There we go.
Gregory.
Yep, we got you.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, City Manager, thank you very much for the opportunity to uh. Address the uh commission regarding the eight can't wait uh topic, we can go to the uh as you may have recalled, there's been a great deal of conversation regarding police use of force. And the uh particularly following the May twenty-fifth uh death of Mr. George Floyd in the custody of Minneapolis Police. Uh this conversation has been nationwide, we've seen it uh manifest itself as in protests as well as in conversations, Zoom calls, go to meeting calls and the and the and the like. Uh one of the outcomes of all this discussion has been the uh a project referred to uh by the campaign zero group. Uh to have recommendations for police departments to incorporate uh into use of force policies. Uh this has been referred to as eight can't wait. Uh so I just wanted to give everyone a bit of a foundational bit of what the eight can't wait is, and then uh I've been asked many questions about how our department policy uh complies with the eight can't wait, so if we can go to the next slide. Uh these are the eight can't wait topics that have been proposed by uh the campaign zero uh project. Uh these statistics, I will tell you, are from the the campaign zero project. Uh they do have some uh a a variety of separate studies that they've carved these numbers from. So I I can't stand up and validate for the and stand behind these statistics, uh and that, so I I don't encourage you to put a lot of weight behind the numbers. However, the they seem to be no-nonsense type measures that have taken a lot of uh have gained a lot of attraction uh across the the country. Specifically, they that the the project lo- looks to have these eight recommendations incorporated in police departments' use of force policy, the first being banning of chokeholds and strangleholds. They are also frequently referred to as neck restraints. The next is to require de-escalation when feasible, uh the departments attempt to de-escalate situations uh when when they can. Uh the next one talks about requiring warning, uh a warning be given uh before shooting at a subject. Uh the next talks about exhausting all other means um to to before getting involved in a shooting. Uh then they em- they the next line, the next row down discusses a uh maybe to have a duty to intervene, which which most departments have historically had. A uh duty to report, that's very common, that if uh there is misconduct, there is excessive use of force, there is unnecessary force. Officers who witnessed that have a duty to report that to their supervisor and or internal affairs or some power to investigate it. Uh but the duty to intervene and stop uh is a is a a bit of a a next step and an evolution of that uh that process. And what we all grotesquely watched in horror uh in Minneapolis as the uh several officers uh were on the scene. Did not intervene uh to stop uh the officer from kneeling on uh Mr. George Floyd's neck for eight minutes. Uh so this is a a gained a lot of attraction and and a bit of a new uh item that hasn't been in a lot of policies before. The next talks about banning shooting at moving vehicles, that's that's a very common one, most department policies, some language to that effect. Uh the next one goes into requirements to use a force continuum, which basically explains what a pro- that the process, the thought process an officer must consider. Uh before going to the next level of force, so where uh if you start with conversation and then you get to a a physical restraint and then you next you get to using some sort of a. Active restraint and then it may involve going to some sort of a uh less than lethal weapon and then as a last resort, getting to a lethal type of situation. So uh that that required to use a force continuum basically uh says in policy, the department has a process which officers have to consider between going from one level to the next. And then the last one there is a requirement uh for comprehensive reporting of when force is used. And and again, uh that's a very uh common one, uh most departments have have had that and and so we've had that in in Boynton Beach as well. Uh and what I'll say is that that it's, they're not unique in and of themselves. And uh and in my experience, many departments have had a number of individual uh items included in their policy. The the catch here is having all eight in the policy. Uh so we fell in that category as well in Boynton Beach, we we've had, I believe, about six that were codified in our policy and uh. We needed to update it with uh the duty intervene and 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 one of the others. Uh and as well as clarifying uh some of our language to be a little more concise and 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 explicit with uh relating directly to these type of of uh recommendations. Next slide, please. Uh this is some uh from the campaign zero project website, so these are not my statistics and I I so I don't stand behind them. But I I wanted you to at least see how they came up with that seventy-two percent uh not adding all these together, I believe these are more so saying if an agency has. Uh at one of these particular items in their policy, they could potentially see uh some percentage of reduction in uh in those in that in that particular element. Um again, this is very difficult to prove and they did carve a number of different uh surveys and research projects together. To try to put this uh the this uh this proposal together, this these guidelines together, I don't believe there is one that encompasses all of them. So this is just to give you an idea of how they play together and which ones had a little more weight with having an impact uh with reductions and and use of force situations. Next slide, please. Uh just to give a couple of examples of how this has already taken effect around the country. So in New Orleans, they've already incorporated, had incorporated in their policy, a duty to intervene and stop another officer from using excessive force, next slide. New Orleans also had a a requirement for officers to try to de-escalate before resorting to force, next slide. In the city of Miami, uh their policy uh for force policy prohibits officers from using chokeholds and strangleholds, next po- uh next next slide. And oh, go back one. Washington DC, uh they had in their policy previously an issue, a a a requirement of officers to issue a warning uh before using deadly force. So these have taken root in some ca- a number of uh cities around the country, and the next slide, we'll see what happens, what's going on already in Palm Beach County, next slide. So the green box to your upper left uh is the Palm Beach Sheriff's Office and they've posted this on their social media and and different locations, showing that they are compliant. Uh with all eight of the eight can't wait items below that, one is the yellow box, which is the city of Delray Beach. Uh they've also posted that slide uh saying that they are in compliance with all eight of those uh policy guidelines. And the box in red to your right uh shows that Boca Raton Police Department uh also have implemented and or updated their policies to reflect. That they are compliant with all um eight of the eight can't wait uh use of force guidelines, next slide. Lastly, I'll I'm proud to show you what we have in Boynton Beach. Uh we have, as I mentioned, uh updated our policy as well to include all eight recommendations. Uh on the far right, you'll see a couple of highlights of uh where we uh and number one for requiring de-escalation, we see, we talk about training for that had been implemented as far back as two thousand and one. Um the language back to that in two thousand and one, what wasn't quite as clear or or specific uh in our policy, but the training was already occurring and in place. Uh regarding banning of chokeholds, our policy does use the language of referring to neck restraints, uh and that had been in place since nineteen ninety-nine. Uh it does uh uh prohibit the use of rep- neck restraints uh or chokeholds unless it's a use of uh lethal force situation. And that will be a situation where the officer would be just as uh authorized to use a firearm as they would uh to use this particular uh restraint mechanism. Uh the duty to intervene is the next one down and we've added that, as I mentioned, uh refreshed our policy just uh right now with that. And we'll be publishing it back out in the next week or so based on staff time and availability. Uh banning the shooting at moving vehicles, uh that had been in policy here in Boynton Beach since nineteen eighty-five. So again, a number of cities had bits and pieces of things, the guidelines going back historically. Uh use of force continuum is a is a uh widely used uh uh strategy and it's been in place in Boynton Beach since nineteen ninety-nine. Uh the next one talks about requiring uh to exhaust all alternative force shooting, that had been in place since nineteen ninety-nine. Uh requirements for warning before, giving a warning before uh deadly force is used had been in place in our policy since nineteen ninety. And then the last one, requiring comprehensive reporting uh had been in place since nineteen eighty-five, again, that's that's quite common language. Uh we did make a deliberate effort to to uh redundant language in our policy and clean it up to it's a little shorter and to the point and using uh more of this language. Which is more modern, you might say, that that people are zoom attuned to right now. Um but uh that kind of wraps up where I wanted to go with explaining what the eight can't wait, what's what is, how it's being received around the country. How it's received in Palm Beach County and how we are now in compliance with oh uh with all eight uh being in the latest updates to our policy. And I'll be happy to take any questions anywhere, Mayor.
All right, um Commissioner Hey, would you like to begin?
Uh sure, uh Chief Gregory, uh question for you. A lot of these uh eight can't wait uh uh in my opinion are subjective. Uh how do how do you measure whether or not they are actually practicing uh these um. These items, these eight can't wait, for example, um required de-escalation, I think that's one of them there. Um how do you know, ha- have our officers been been really, what kind of training do they have? Uh to to de-escalate a situation, because I'm asking this because I get uh young people talking to me about. Just the opposite of how the officer talked to them and it seems to uh escalate rather than de-escalate. So I'm just wondering, how do you measure that? Whether or not they're doing that or not?
It's a great question, Commissioner, thank you for that. Uh there is a number of ways that that can be measured, the the most obvious is obviously if someone feels like you just described those uh young people, their experience, they can certainly report that to internal affairs. Uh so we will receive a complaint, they'll be investigated by our internal affairs section or our our division commanders. Uh in addition to that, our our uh off our supervisors, uh well, first, officers are required to document their force used in their police reports. When the supervisor review those reports, uh they review the the actions taken by the officers and can determine whether that was appropriate or or excessive. And also, our officers also wear body cameras, so that can be played back and reviewed to see what takes, what's taking place. I'll 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 just speak uh anecdotally from a few uh several uh incidents where I've had people express concerns about an officer. Being rude or discourteous or not de-escalating, and when I've gone back and watched the video, I've found it to be the opposite, where the officer was often. Uh cordial and appropriate with the the direction given. And the person that was uh on the other end of that was disrespectably officer and non-compliant with the direction they'd been given. Certainly, that's not a ca- uh the case all of the time, but I'll tell you, that is the benefit of the body worn camera program is that we can actually go back and play these scenarios and see what took place. And I do find on a number of occasions that uh what I've been told by complaint it happened isn't always what happened.
Uh do you have uh any kind of policy against uh someone that or that our right to have a cell phone? And just uh recording what's going on? Is that something uh an officer can say, give me that phone or or you can't do that? Is it? Is that a violation to ask for someone's cell phone if they're recording?
No, it is not, uh but I will give a caveat to that. Uh if you are a third party, uh any uninvolved uh interest in that contact with the police, you can certainly stand by. And use your cell phone to record what's taking place, you're within your rights to do so. Uh however, if you are the subject of the officer's interaction, if you're the one receiving the traffic ticket, if you're the one who's the uh uh. Being um addressed by the officer in some sort of a domestic violence or some sort of uh uh you're the the suspect of a crime. Obviously, the officer has to take control of you, he can't have you fumbling with your phone, going into your pockets, that is an unsafe condition. And we can restrict your motion, your movement at that point in time to to ensure the safety of the officer during that contact, if you are the subject. But any other uh innocent bystander, third party group could certainly record the incident and that's totally uh legal under uh Constitution.
What my last uh question with uh Mayor, uh are there any uh consequence for violation of these uh eight can't wait? Uh what's, what what do you, what do you do if if someone is not uh really uh abiding by what you have here?
Well, they that's the key of rolling them out into policy, so they just won't be uh niceties or things, good recommendations for you to follow. Uh these will be in policy and it would be, if someone violates one of them, uh it would be a policy violation and and then that would be taken on uh. Uh the totality of circumstances, how egregious was the violation? Uh did they use excessive force and injure someone who went to the hospital? Or did the officer just did not give you enough time to uh de-escalate before they uh took you into custody for shoplifting? Uh so uh it depends on the circumstances and then if it's a policy violation, uh the result could be anything from a warning to retraining to discipline.
Thank you, Chief.
Um I guess, uh Chief, I have a a couple of questions. One is the internal affairs, um I've spoken with a couple residents and they're afraid of to go to eternal affairs because they're believe that there'll be. Um reprisal from the police against them. Um I want to know if you could address that and explain the the actual polit- uh procedures of if a resident or someone else has a complaint to go to eternal affairs.
Well, certainly, and that is, I'm not, uh that's not the first time I heard that concern uh here or in other cities. So we try to go above and beyond to try to alleviate that concern from the community. Uh one of the uh steps uh we took after I got here was to relocate internal affairs outside of the police station. So folks would feel less concerned about potentially encountering the officer they want to complain on in the lobby of the police station. Or in the inside the bowels of the police station, you might say, so they don't have to come in to make that complaint, they can do it our off-site internal affairs office. They can also do it on the web, on our website by sending it, by uh going to our website and filing that complaint uh electronically or digitally uh online. Uh they can send us a letter uh and via mail, or on the court, they could just call our internal affairs office and speak to someone over the phone and relay the information. Uh we do need an actual complaint and some and some specificity as to what their allegation of the of misconduct is for us to investigate. Uh so we do need to hear from them uh and not necessarily a third party as to what is going on, so we can take a statement and uh have that as a a a stipulation of fact. Uh about a misconduct allegation on the officer, but we try to do the best we can to make it convenient and uh not intimidating for the public to come forward and and raise concerns.
All right, um and where's the best place to find that information to for the number?
It is all on our website.
And is it, what is the website?
W W W dot B B P D dot org, O R G.
All right, thank you so much. My second question is not so much about the Campaign Zero, but it's in regard to a question that I've been thinking about regarding the upcoming, upcoming school year with virtual school. And child neglect. What exactly, let's say a parent needs to leave the house and their child is seven or eight years old. Is that considered child neglect? If they, the child's in the home and supposedly knows how to take care of themselves?
All by themselves?
Correct, someone who's.
Be worthy of investigation, and we would send an officer out there to initiate investigation and probably would also would be required to notify the Department of Children and Families. So they conduct their investigation far as to well-being of the child.
What about someone who's, let's say, in high school, who's fifteen years old and is left alone in the house? Is that the same sort of theory regarding child neglect?
Generally speaking, the older the child, the more mature they are. But again, it is somewhat of a case by case situation. If the child is, has disability, if the child has some. Something that, a mental condition that prevents them from being able to take care of themselves sufficiently, those could change the actual age that someone should be left alone. So again, it would be worthy of investigation, we would review it, we would call in our partners with DCF to also do a child well-being investigation. And a decision would be made at the end of that investigation as to what, if it was appropriate or not.
Okay, and let's say there was someone over the age of eighteen in the house. That was deemed to have watching the child, but it wasn't really doing their job, and the child was left out, who's responsible at that point?
As they say, adult supervisors for the kid, well, well-being and, and taking care of that child. So if the child is injured or runs away, it's the responsibility of that caretaker, and they would be held liable.
Okay, I appreciate this conversation, thank you.
A pleasure.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, we've, we've already discussed this in private, and one of the items that, you know, I'm really fixated on is the idea of duty to intervene. And, you know, what makes this so difficult is because this is really a culture change. Now, this is something that we saw with the George Floyd situation, and part of that was that there was this massive power discrepancy. We had a senior training officer and, and a rookie. And so my, my question to you is, how would you go about taking this from paper policy to actual common culture in the department? Because I don't know how I would do it, to be honest, because of that ingrained mentality and, and the fact that it is a cultural issue.
As usual, you're quite perceptive, Vice Mayor. It will be a challenge, and it will take time to, I believe, seek, sink in and, and allow us to start changing the culture. But it's something that has to happen. We certainly don't expect officers not to report when they see another officer steal something. Or they see another officer do something totally egregious like that, and they, and they don't, they speak up. We've seen that time and time again. What we need to do, though, is maybe change the threshold as to what they're going to speak up about. Everyone comfortable knowing that they have the department's support in speaking out about misconduct. And that's where this policy becomes important. While we always expected our officers to, to speak out if they see something that's wrong, or there's misconduct, or there's inappropriate behavior with a prisoner or something of that nature. There is that underlying theme that, well, this person is senior to me, I'm junior, what is it going to do for my career? I'm making a choice as to what to do, to report, not report, intervene, not intervene, say something or don't. By implementing a policy such as the duty to intervene, it takes that discretion away from the rookie employee. It is a requirement of the department that they intervene and they report. And that should give some amount of cover, you might say, to those new officers who don't feel like they are. Comfortable speaking out necessarily, well, it's, it's not an option not to speak out. It's an expectation that you will. And as we've started having this conversation at the department and in some briefings I've attended, I've, I've had a number of, of sergeants and officers. Speak up during the conversation and say, well, you know what? It's not like that always, because I remember when I was in this situation, I stopped another officer from doing something bad. Or I stopped another officer from going too far, or I intervened before there was a policy to intervene. And I think part of the conversation will be getting the younger officers to understand that, hey, it's okay, others have done it before you, and we want you to do it too. Happen overnight, it will be a bit of a culture shift and change, and it'll be a matter of putting in policy, training the officers on it. And then reiterating and reinforcing that with conversations and examples going forward over the next several years.
Chief, related to that, you know, if I were a rookie officer and I was in that situation, part of my thinking would be that I'm afraid. I'm afraid that there might be some retribution towards me for standing up and doing something about it. And of course, we're only talking here about, you know, the extreme situation, right? Is there some sort of guarantee or protection for the person who's standing up to do the right thing in these extreme scenarios?
It is the policy, and that's the protection that they have, that they are acting within policy. And for not act is a violation of policy of which they can be disciplined. And I'll, I'll push back just a little bit, I really don't think it's going to be that hard, as you mentioned, in the extreme situations where there's.
One percent of the time.
Where an officer is actually using excessive force or going too far, I think that's an easier decision for officers to make. I think that's when there's glaring obvious misconduct, I think there's much, it's much more easier for someone to speak out.
Got it, okay. All, all I said was just clarification on the extreme situation, but I think we're on the same page.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Ramus or Commissioner Katz, do you have any questions before we move on to the next item?
No question, no questions, just thank you to the chief and to our police department and police officers for. You know, doing their part to continue to protect and serve our residents and, and doing it above, above par. I know, I know we've had history in the past, but we're doing better each and every day to continue to improve on that. And, and set the example of what it means to truly protect and serve our community, so that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything from you, Commissioner, Commissioner Katz?
No, not at this time, I just, I appreciate the, the presentation, I appreciate the, the questions as well from my fellow commissioners, Commissioner Pensurga. I, I appreciate the line of inquiry you went down to try to, to make sure these are, they're more than just, like you said, things on paper. They become actual activity and policy. So I commend everybody and, and fully support, you know, what's before us, obviously.
Thank you, and Chief, before you go, did you have any experience, did the city of Boynton Beach have any incidences of rioting and looting? After the, in June?
No, we didn't have any incidents of looting or any, any out of control rioting, no.
All right, thank, and I attest that to you, and I want to thank your service to making sure that all of our businesses and residents are safe.
Well, thank you very much, but I'll have to pass that on to our officers who are out there on the streets, who were interacting with the public regularly. And, and in some cases, sharing water and the like with the protesters and letting them know that, you know, we stand behind the Constitution. And if that's what they're behind, then we're on the same page.
All right, thank you for allowing me to recorrect. I want to attest that to you, all of our chiefs and lieutenants, captains, officers, detectives. And all of our civil servants in the Boynton Beach Police Department that are working together to make sure that we are safer here in Boynton Beach.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, our next item is the unfinished business proposed resolution number twenty dash zero six zero. Approve the request from New Singular Wires PCS LLC formerly Bell South Mobility, Inc. Less see to amend the lease agreement for the hundred fifty foot telecommunication tower at three hundred East Wilbright Road, City's Little League Field Site. If you, if the commission mind, doesn't mind, I'll just read what was in bold on the agenda. This item, item six day from the July seventh meeting was tabled. Staff has renegotiated the proposed lease amendment as directed by the city commission. For in the interest of increasing public access to wireless service within the immediate area of the tower, only sections nine additional rent and fourteen consideration were revised. The proposed additional rent has remained unchanged, however, details were added to show the association with public wireless access. Also, the applicant has increased the total lump sum consideration by five thousand to fund the installation of public wireless infrastructure. So may I have a motion to remove it from the table?
We'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All of those in favor of removing from the table state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any oppose? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. And if nobody has anything to say, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second with a question.
Go ahead.
On the topic of public wireless infrastructure, I wanted to ask all of you if anybody from the school district had reached out to any of you. I know that Erica Whitfield had presented the school district plan for public wifi to meet the student demands at Lake Worth. And I suspect maybe that will be forthcoming for Boynton as well. Has, have there been any discussions on this?
No, I've not spoken to any of the school, public school, Palm Beach County School Commissioners to have that information.
Given everything that's happening, and I think, I suspect that they'll be pushing through with it. We may have a good opportunity here to collaborate with them to make that happen. And, and that's it for my comments.
All right, thank you. Is there any other comments from the city commission? Saying none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. So the new business that we have put on the agenda to discuss is regarding our students and parents for the upcoming fall school year. As you know, I recently, you know, we just had, I asked some questions of our chief regarding child neglect. Because that was a concern of mine in regards to parents leaving children at home with a computer and internet and thinking without parental supervision. And then, as you mentioned just recently, what if they don't have computer and internet and they're still left at home? You know, what happens when we start seeing minors on the streets during working hours during the week? And so that's kind of the, the questions that have been going on in my mind. And I want to be proactive about this so that we don't try to, you know, fix a solution that we, fix a problem that we could have had a solution before the problem happened. You know, I know that our library has the, the free wifi's and the, sorry, has the free rentable wifi's and free rentable laptops. However, we do not have enough for every child and every household. You know, the, the aspect of, you know, the subsidized or extremely discounted wireless or internet from Comcast, T and T. I think we need as a city to get that information so that we can share that with the, our residents and parents. So that everyone has access to the internet because. It's, internet is at that point where it is an essential utility if you're going to school. And we can't, you know, allow our residents and students to fall behind, especially a school year. If they don't have this valuable resource. So that's kind of where, you know, I'm brainstorming with you to see what we can do, whether we can, you know, try to reach out to the chambers of commerce. Our big box retailers, our nonprofits. So that we can be collaborative and have the partnerships. And go reach out to our residents that may be hesitant to ask for help. You know, the big thing that I have is, is that, you know, taking care of my daughter, you know, me and my wife, we both work. So, you know, I understand that a lot of people felt that, you know, or I guess, Commissioner Ramos, you can inform us what life is like. When you have a child in school and when a child's not in school, the difference that, that means to you. And that's kind of where I'm just hoping to have a conversation and get ideas. The main idea that I want to hopefully promote is, you know, sort of pods so that we assist our community, you know, people in the same school or even different schools. The same families can go to one location and so that a parent may only have to miss one day a week of work instead of five days a week of work. And so I'll open it up to the commission to have that conversation.
Mayor, what was the last thing you just said?
Say it one more time.
The last thing you just said about days of work?
So the comment is regarding pods, and so let's say you have, your, your child has a couple of friends. And instead of having one student at the table, you have, you know, a couple of the students at the table. And the household, and that way, you know, you're, you know, instead of going to a school with hundreds of people. You are still taking a risk of leaving your house and going with other people, but you are limiting it to five or six other students. Not five or six hundred students at the school. And that's considered like a pod of learning, and it doesn't necessarily that they're all in the same class. Or same school. It's just the aspect of doing, making sure our children know that, hey, you got to get up every day, you got to get dressed, you got to leave your house. And be productive. Because some people are fine with not leaving the house and being productive, and some people aren't. And that's kind of where I think it's a little bit harder for a child to understand the difference between work and play and home if they're all in the same location.
Yeah, I, I, I get it, and I understand the concern, I guess I'm just a little confused as to what you're proposing we as this city do. Which I think is what Justin was kind of mentioning earlier, I'm, I'm definitely there with you. Like I have two boys and they're, they're boys, they're active, they're seven and four, and they're bored out of their minds sometimes. And I have to find the ways to entertain them, and it doesn't always work to try to, you know, balance that out. But I guess I'm just trying to understand a little bit more of what are you proposing that we as a city within our capacity do?
You know, the, the aspect of it is that, you know, we do have some facilities, you know, Carolyn Sims, is that going to be open? You know, during the school year, when kids are stuck at home to say, hey, we're going to go to, you know, Carolyn Sims, are we going to go to the library? Are we going to go to the civic center? Are we going to try to have, you know, childcare because we do have facilities that can handle childcare? Available to certain parents, certain residents, one option. The other second option is. I'm hearing some echo, but. Is to try to create information for our residents. You know, we don't have an education liaison with the city of Boynton Beach. But is, you know, how do we, can, you know, using our Parks and Recs Department, can we create best practices for our students? Because at one time, we didn't have the availability to reach with, reach out to them during the school day. And now we are going to have that availability through our Parks and Recs Department. And so I don't necessarily have an idea of something that the city can do. That's kind of why I'm reaching out to you, because this is our opportunity to brainstorm and resources. And, you know, one of the things that I was thinking is, is that I know we currently have a balanced budget. But I remember receiving a email from our assistant city manager Catherine Mattos regarding school supplies for Citrus Cove. You know, how many of the other schools need, or students that were going to go to school need help with the school supplies? Is that something that the city can do to help raise funds or to help donate city funds to? I'm aware that I believe other municipalities do make donations to their public schools. Wellington, for example, but I may be wrong on that. And that's kind of where I'm at is that. We, we, we need to think about the. We 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 need to think about the upcoming issues before they become problems.
I I hear you, Mayor, I, you know, if we're gonna brainstorm and just kind of throw things out and throw them on the wall and see what sticks. I'm I'm definitely down for, you know. Some of the things I know staff has done in the past has been like on on Fridays where, you know, if they want to dress down, they. Try to donate and do different things to to help, maybe perhaps that can be geared towards helping local schools and. And, you know. Some of the money that's raised can be can go towards art supply, I know Lori and I had a conversation as well about. Getting staff to volunteer and and help and and getting partially compensated for that. That's something that I'm also willing to explore and look into, you know, because I know a lot of. Families, they need tutors for their kids, their kids are struggling, they're falling behind academically. There's lots of things we can propose and. Brainstorm on, but but I I think we're all kind of in the same boat right now where we're we're trying to figure this out as we go. And, you know, thank you just for at least even bringing it up and and talking about it, my husband and I are having a daily conversation about, you know, what do we do as as the fall semester comes aboard. Fortunately, I have the flexibility to kind of be with the kids as needed. But I know not everybody has that luxury, so it is definitely an important conversation that needs to be had. You know, I just want to make sure that we don't place undue burden on our staff and ourselves. As this isn't necessarily our realm to, you know, to operate in and to resolve.
Okay. Thank you for that. And is there any, yes, Vice Mayor?
Mayor, first I want to thank you for bringing this up, and I appreciate you. Trying to be proactive, I think that's what we should be doing. So a lot of ideas were kind of thrown around, and I want to just take them one thing at a time. One, I want to volunteer, I'll volunteer to reach out to our school board members. On the school district to see what's the situation with their public wifi project. I really think. That's coming. If my memory serves me right, but I will reach out and and find out. And but, you know, one simple thing we can do. Is do a better job in pushing out some programs that are already being offered, so for example. I think Comcast has, what is it called? Comcast Essentials. Internet Essentials, exactly, and I think a lot of people don't know about it. And so we should be pushing that out in our newsletters and and our websites, so that's a resource that people should be taking advantage of if that's something that they can do. You did mention. It sounded like you were you were saying that, you know, there's something staff could do to. To take care or be a part of or easing the burden of 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 childcare. My concern with that, I'll say my concern and then I'll propose a solution, my concern is that, you know, if we congregate kids. And, you know, and we have an outbreak, I think that's a serious liability on us, and I don't think that's our place, and we shouldn't be. Be putting in ourselves in that legal situation. But I think what we could do. Is that in terms of, at least for our city employees, since we're one of the largest employers. And where it is possible. If we could just be more flexible with our city employees that have children. So, you know, maybe just being more cognizant and be more flexible with shifts, maybe maybe that could do it. So while one parent is out, the other parent can work from home if that's possible. This way, I don't think there'll be a financial impact. But then you're also making that accommodation. But what you're really bringing up is for the residents. You know, I don't really have a good idea right now, but I I will think about it now that you brought that up. But so, yeah, that so that's where I am, be more flexible with our employees. Particularly the essential ones that really have to show up to work no matter what. As well as outworking with the school district, I think that really is coming down the road, but I'll verify.
Thank you. And so. Does anyone else from the commission? Commissioner Hay.
I do support. What has been said, I think it's good to be proactive as been stated. Thank you, Mayor, for bringing it up. I I did want, I do want to show an interest, even though. My baby is forty seven. But I do have three grands. And I gotta be concerned about those grands. Because they're returning to school. So I I believe that. What the. Vice Mayor brought up about what we can do. In terms of being flexible is a good idea. We just need to. Look in into that a little bit more. And be a little more understanding with our employees and and just. Because there are some counties that. It's mandatory. And others are not, so you got to look out, look at how this thing rolls out. And how we're going to roll out in Palm Beach County. I think we 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 do. Need to show more of an interest, I did hear. About a meeting. Where they're talking about trying to use the churches as a possible. Site to and and maybe try to call some teachers out of retirement to try to try to help. But again, going back to the point that Vice Mayor made. About the liability. So but it's all been brought to the table, and this is the right time to discuss it. But you really need to look at all angles. And I'm open to for discussion as we kick this can down the road. So, thank you.
Commissioner Romulus.
Oh, I I didn't want to skip Justin, if you wanted to have him go first and I could go after.
Commissioner Katz, do you have anything to weigh in on?
I guess just, you know, I'm I'm open to. If someone can come up with some ideas to assist parents and the community. Or third parties in the community to. You know, to to tackle some of the negative consequences of. Child supervision and and distance learning and how all that works out for parents. I I don't know if I believe the city. Has a direct or formal role, certainly. I couldn't support anything that. That created a new activity or obligation for city employees that that exposed them to additional contacts. I just feel like I need to be consistent with my position with the school district and and the need for distance learning. So to minimize social interactions and the spread, so I I couldn't support anything that really. Created new. New interactions for our employees. I I appreciate the spirit of it, I promise I've been. Been neck deep in in all sorts of things, including this type of. Concern for employees and parents who have children. Going back or not going back, so I've I've thought about this extensively. I just don't know what the role, I don't have ideas, I'm not against that. Creative ideas, but I don't have any ideas of what the city's. Direct role could truly be. Other than cooperating or assisting the school district. Within our our own municipality. If that makes sense.
No, I know, it makes, it's a lot of sense because we've never. Had the to deal with this, and that's that's kind of the the worst kind of problems, the ones you don't know that you need to know about. And so I think, you know, it's it's the aspect of. You know, at you see some of the elementary schools, they had the the banners there of. People advertising them with them and, you know, sponsoring them. You know, I don't know if we're allowed to, you know, help with the trying to get school sponsorships or that we should reach out. To our partners with the the central chamber or the Boca Chamber. To really have to see if any of the businesses or associations. Are willing to to reach out and. To give a little bit to the the students that who are in need. Because I I do recall that most of our public schools are Title One schools. And that way, and that shows that they need, you know, a little bit more help. And I think that's kind of it is that I'd like to, you know, have this conversation. And for our next meeting, and hopefully. We as the city can find some partners. Who have some ideas that we can work with. To help the different schools. In Boynton Beach, and yes, Commissioner Romulus.
Thank you, again, I'm I'm brainstorming as we're talking about this, so some of the other ideas I thought of are. Perhaps doing kind of socially distant happy hours for families at our local parks. I know sometimes it just helps to just kind of get out and have a couple of other families and kids interact with, so. Perhaps that's why they just kind of get kids out of the home and give them an opportunity to see other kids, see their friends that they may may perhaps not usually see, so that's something maybe Parks and Recs they kind of. Brainstorming come up with and maybe try to do in a socially distant and safe manner outdoors preferably. The other idea, you know, I would like to maybe have Lori. Survey our staff, we can't really control. Everybody outside of, you know, of our city, but we can control our our employee population to a certain extent. So those eight hundred or so people that we employ, I I'd like to see if there's a survey that could go out to kind of ask some of our employees. You know. What if any problems are they foreseeing with childcare and and their scheduling and and maybe perhaps there's something that we could. Brainstorm around that, maybe we could. Again, don't don't kill me for throwing these ideas out, but maybe we could do like four day work weeks, or we could, you know. You know, manage things like schedules, like like Vice Mary was saying, where maybe we have morning shifts and afternoon shifts where parents can kind of balance each other out. So I'm just saying, you know, for within our city, we can try to do some things as well to just help our employee base and see what can be done. And, you know, whatever, I I I'm I'll keep brainstorming, so. What I got so far.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I have a question, so you you or several of you have brought up the idea of potential partners. And my question is, I think maybe best for Lori. Has YMCA reached out to you, other any discussion, I know they do a lot of programming with kids. And so they're in our community, and I figured maybe we could partner with them. Have they reached out and said anything?
Yes, we actively participate pre-COVID, we actively participate with the Y in terms of their programming coming into our facilities and back and forth, and we would we would work with them. They've offered on several occasions now, and we've. Put it out to our employees for childcare. Opportunities and some summer camp opportunities, and we put that out to our employees. I don't know, we have them connect with them directly. But that's the extent, right? Yeah, there's a cost, and the the city was actually willing to subsidize a portion of that for our employees. But I I don't know that anyone really. Ended up doing it because of the fear, I think, of kids being around other kids, but. I I do want to just take the moment to respond to Commissioner Romulus too, we we recently just did a survey. On from more of a teleworking, telecommuting standpoint and. You know, what were our employees' experiences while they were commuting, and we have developed a program to allow. Employees where we can. To allow them to possibly flex their schedules, we we we've been doing that for years, I will say we have an outstanding culture. With our human resources department for accommodating employees with all different kinds of needs, from a single parent needing a. A later shift because of getting a kid to childcare, any of that stuff, we work with them all the time. So we are working on. Those opportunities where people can successfully telework and help them now, especially with childcare issues. We have the federal protections that are in place now anyhow with the FFRC CRA and the family medical leave for childcare needs during this pandemic. We have several employees that are that are. Utilizing that program, and we've worked with them all, so we we absolutely. I want you to feel confident that as an employer, we, I think, do an outstanding job of accommodating our employees, because we want them to be. Happy. And be able to come into work and be effective, and we're all parents, we all get it, I've. Thank God my kids are grown now, and I'm not dealing with school age children during COVID, Christina, I feel your pain. That I'm just. You know, sensitive to that and very much empathetic, so. I think we do a pretty pretty darn good job with that with with every employee we have.
Alright. Thank you so much. And I think we'll have, you know, a brief conversation. Next meeting, see if we can brainstorm and find partners on behalf of the residents of here in the city of Boynton Beach, yes, Vice Mayor.
And Lori, I'd like to ask if you could help us push up the message that internet, is it internet essentials or Comcast Essentials? That is an option for for families who are struggling with that.
Yep, and I.
In our next newsletter.
And I'll send you the the information for AT&amp;T access as well. Because I believe that this was old Southern Bell area for a long time.
Yep.
Alright, moving on to legal, readop resolution R twenty dash zero six six and resolution R twenty dash zero six seven. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, these are back on the agenda, you have adopted both of these resolutions at the previous meeting, but. There was some question about whether or not all members of the public had the opportunity. To see the actual resolutions in the agenda backup. So just in an abundance of caution, because these are key components of the annual budget process. They're back on for your consideration. I will point out that I did tweak. The language regarding the September eighth. Twenty twenty five thirty commission meetings to clarify that. If at all possible. We will conduct the meetings both in person. Or through some combination of communication media technology. Perhaps both, but of course, that's contingent on the legal ability to do so. The the rights of local government to continue with virtual meetings is under review. But there are deadlines approaching with respect to that. So if these are adopted, I would point out that the resolution regarding the millage. I would restate that the millage rate is seven point nine zero zero. And the rollback rate is seven point four nine one one. The public meeting on both the millage. Resolution and on the fire assessment. Will occur on September the eighth, twenty twenty at five thirty. And as I noted, or through communication media technology or both. So just a separate motion on each resolution, please.
Alright, and Jim, do you need to read anything from those resolutions into the record?
No, sir, just had to announce the the millage rate, the rollback rate and the the date of the public meeting.
Alright. That's. So resolution R twenty dash zero six six, a resolution of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, adopting a proposed municipal. Millage rate for general operating budget purposes for fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty one. Stating a rollback rate and setting forth the date, time and place of the first public hearing, providing for an effective date. They have a motion to approve.
So move.
Okay.
Is there any discussion? Saying none? All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Resolution number R twenty dash zero six seven, a resolution of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida relating to the provisions of fire rescue services, facilities and programs in the city of Boynton Beach, Florida. Describing the method of assessing fire rescue assessed costs against assessed property located within the city of Boynton Beach. Directing the preparation of an assessment role, authorizing a public hearing and directing the provision of notice thereof and providing effective date. They have a motion to approve.
So move.
So move.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to future agenda items. I'd like to remove items B and D. As we don't necessarily know when they're they're going to go, and we don't control that area.
Mayor, there's no item D, which item were you referring to?
Oh, I'm sorry, B and C.
Okay.
It was TBD, yeah. But I would like to have a presentation from our community specialist. In regards to that department in the city of Boynton Beach. And what they can do for our residents regarding homeownership.
Okay.
Lori, is that something we can have probably by by September?
Mayor, I literally, I didn't hear the first part, I heard homeownership, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Get a presentation from LaShay book, LaShay Brooks about our community specialist department in the city of Boynton Beach.
Sure. We can do that next meeting.
Oh, okay. And I think that's it. If anybody else, otherwise may have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Alright. Means adjourn, Alan, would you prepare the the closing?
Thank you, Mayor. As a reminder, recording.
As a reminder, a recorded version of this session will be posted to the city of Boynton Beach's YouTube channel. Links to that channel are available on the city of Boynton Beach's website at www dot Boynton dash beach dot org. This concludes today's meeting. On behalf of Mayor Grant and all of our elected officials, the city manager and city staff, thank you for attending today's city of Boynton Beach Commission meeting. Be safe and have a great evening.
Bye bye. Thank you, Alan.